Good evening. This is Monday, December 19th, and we're at 5:30 PM. This is the Subcommittee on Committee of the Whole. May you join me in the bleeds.
We do have eight members present. We have a quorum. Before we start, I would just like to make an announcement that School Committee Member Sarni did notify me this evening that due to work commitment that she would be here at our regular meeting and will be late for this one if she's able to make it in time. But she did want to let her colleagues know that she has read this policy and looks forward to joining us later this evening. So with that being said, Madam Superintendent, if I can turn to you and ask you to read the first piece of business, or the only piece of business on the agenda?
Yes, the agenda item this evening is to review and discuss the district's residency
Wonderful. So before you, you should have our most updated residency policy. Everything remains the same from the last time we discussed it as far as re-establishing residency and how we'll be rolling that in, what evidence of residency and occupancy we will provide. However, we definitely did hear and acknowledge the concerns regarding students who come in who may not have all of the required paperwork because they are new to the country or they're refugees. And we did add language at the end of the policy that lists out the entitlements for newcomer and refugee students. This is actually directly from the DESI guidance on this subject. And also, we decided to include the entitlements for students facing homelessness as well since there could also be some exceptionalities in those cases as well. So hopefully, these revisions address the concerns that we heard from the body, and I'm happy to take any questions. Otherwise, I recommend or do hope that this group will recommend to approve the policy.
Madam, School Committee Member Cardello?
Thank you. Do the chair. Can we possibly have the superintendent read what is listed here as far as the column A, column B, so that the general public knows what we're talking about here? And then maybe even that last page which explains so much that were
Absolutely. So it remains very similar to the way it was before. So column A is evidence of residency. So students must provide the school with one document from both column A and column B. So under column A, you can provide a recent mortgage payment or property tax bill, or a copy of lease and recent rental receipt, or a residency certification provided by the city clerk's office and recent rental receipt, or Section 8 or housing agreement. So that would be column A, evidence of residency. Under column B, one item also needs to be provided, and that's evidence of occupancy. One of the following bills dated within the past 30 days or evidence of a utility account established at an Everett address with the name, and this could be an excise tax bill, gas, electric, or home telephone, but no And then as for the additional...
There's no school next week. Is that going to be all right?
Oh my gosh.
That's awesome. So excited.
Good evening. This is Monday, December 19th, and we're at 5:30 PM. This is the Subcommittee on Committee of the Whole. May you join me in the bleeds.
Student Rep. Riley Avalar?
Present.
Mr. Barrows? Ms. Cardello?
Present.
Mayor Di Maria?
Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Present.
Mr. La Monica?
Present.
Mr. Mangan?
Present.
Mr. Marcus?
Here.
Ms. Sarni?
Present.
Ms. Christiano?
Present.
Chair McGlaughlin?
Present.
We do have eight members present. We have a quorum. Before we start, I would just like to make an announcement that School Committee Member Sarni did notify me this evening that due to work commitment that she would be here at our regular meeting and will be late for this one if she's able to make it in time. But she did want to let her colleagues know that she has read this policy and looks forward to joining us later this evening. So with that being said, Madam Superintendent, if I can turn to you and ask you to read the first piece of business, or the only piece of business on the agenda?
Yes, the agenda item this evening is to review and discuss the district's residency policy.
Wonderful. So before you, you should have our most updated residency policy. Everything remains the same from the last time we discussed it as far as re-establishing residency and how we'll be rolling that in, what evidence of residency and occupancy we will provide. However, we definitely did hear and acknowledge the concerns regarding students who come in who may not have all of the required paperwork because they are new to the country or they're refugees. And we did add language at the end of the policy that lists out the entitlements for newcomer and refugee students. This is actually directly from the DESI guidance on this subject. And also, we decided to include the entitlements for students facing homelessness as well since there could also be some exceptionalities in those cases as well. So hopefully, these revisions address the concerns that we heard from the body, and I'm happy to take any questions. Otherwise, I recommend or do hope that this group will recommend to approve the policy.
Madam, School Committee Member Cardello?
Thank you. Do the chair. Can we possibly have the superintendent read what is listed here as far as the column A, column B, so that the general public knows what we're talking about here? And then maybe even that last page which explains so much that were concerns.
Absolutely. So it remains very similar to the way it was before. So column A is evidence of residency. So students must provide the school with one document from both column A and column B. So under column A, you can provide a recent mortgage payment or property tax bill, or a copy of lease and recent rental receipt, or a residency certification provided by the city clerk's office and recent rental receipt, or Section 8 or housing agreement. So that would be column A, evidence of residency. Under column B, one item also needs to be provided, and that's evidence of occupancy. One of the following bills dated within the past 30 days or evidence of a utility account established at an Everett address with the name, and this could be an excise tax bill, gas, electric, or home telephone, but no cell phones. And then as for the additional...
I mean, this isn't a, you know, police don't like to get into this kind of business. It doesn't help them, and it doesn't help us. I'd like to make a motion to strike the police.
On that motion, I have a second on the motion. I have Mr. Mangan on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Through you to superintendent, I just want to get your input on, because this was put there for a reason. Before I vote either way, I wanted to know what your opinion is and why we put this in there and why you think it's necessary.
So we were utilizing templates from other districts. However, I do, and again, we were trying to be as conservative as possible. However, I do agree that this is something that we can do internally and that we do not need to involve other authorities. So I think the current leader, the leadership teams of the schools, the district leadership, along with the student department's attendance officers should be sufficient. And in the case that we ever find that it's not for some reason and we realize we must involve others, we can always bring that back for consideration of this body. But since I can't even think of an instance in which that would be required, I would agree with striking it.
Because, like you said, I'm not saying I'm forward or against it. I just, I'm still, I can understand both sides of it. Like I said, if it is unusual, I mean, it probably would be an unusual situation, so I'm not sure if getting rid of it's the best thing or even, I mean, I don't, that's why I'm kind of up in the air about it. I don't know if any other members, I'd like to, any other members have any questions on this, like concerns, or maybe kind of light me on maybe situations, I'd be willing to listen before I take a vote, just so I, you know, can be as devil as possible when I'm making my decision. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Mangan. On the motion, I have Ms. Cardello on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That whole paragraph is a little bit confusing to me. The police thing is, I think, totally unnecessary, but I don't understand where, and I have a lot of respect for attendance officers, that's for sure, but why would they be looking for additional documentation, because we have it spelled out here?
I would say that in case there, we do want to put that provision in just to allow us to ask for additional documentation in the case, for example, that there are concerns that perhaps what they have provided isn't sufficient. So that may be to say that maybe it's unclear based on the documentation provided, that even though they provided an excise tax bill, it's unclear who it belongs to, and we request additional documentation. I think that also covers us in the case that, you know, for the students who do fall under the entitlements, that we could provide other documentation.
Okay, I'm definitely comfortable with that and with our own attendance officers being involved, but I agree with my colleagues. I don't see where this is a police issue at all. You know, we're not looking for criminals, so. So I would vote against it as is. If we just delete that portion of it, I'm definitely in favor of the whole thing. Thank you.
On the motion? May? Oh, I do have, just on the motion, if I may, through to the chair. Madam Superintendent, so, or Ms. Cardello, I think just touched on it, but so in this paragraph that Ms. Lambert is talking about, are we proposing to just strike out the warden of the police and leave in attendance officers?
Yes, I think we would just add in a period after officers and take out the remainder of that sentence.
Okay, because I'm definitely in favor of striking out, not definitely in favor, but I'm okay with striking out police, but leaving attendance officers to be a part of the discussion, I think, is most appropriate and necessary for them to be able to do their job, which they're hired to do. So then we wouldn't want to make a motion to strike out the entire paragraph. We would just want to make a motion to strike out the warden of police department. I'll yield the floor to Ms. Lambert. She can explain her thought.
Thank you, and I apologize if I was unclear. So I would just be striking out and/or may obtain the services of police or investigative agency personnel to conduct investigations into a student's residence. So again, it would just add the period after school department's attendance officers. So it would just be that portion of the sentence.
Second the motion?
On that motion, I'm sorry, no cross debate, but I'm just trying to get a clarification before I vote. Ms. Lambert, if I can ask you. So striking out beyond services of police or investigative agencies personnel, period. Should we leave in there to conduct investigations into students' residence, so the attendance officers can conduct investigations into students' residence? So we're allowing the attendance officers to conduct investigations? So I, and I could be wrong, and that's okay, but should we just strike out, leave attendance officers, period, strike out and/or may obtain services of police investigative agencies, agency personnel? Strike that out and leave in there to conduct investigations into?
Second the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, so I'm going to read that so that we're all clear on the motion, if that's okay. So the paragraph that we're discussing is going to say Everett schools may request additional documentation, may use the assistance of the school department's attendance officers, period, to conduct investigations into a student's residence, period.
Comma, I apologize. Comma, to conduct.
Comma, to conduct. I'm sorry, right, I apologize. Comma, to conduct investigations into students' attendance. Okay, so everybody's clear on the motion. So then we have a second on the motion, and on that, I would ask Mr. O'Connor to read roll call vote on the motion as seconded, with the language that we just read.
As amended?
As amended, correct.
Are we just voting on striking this, right?
Just this one paragraph as of right now?
Yeah, amendment.
On the... Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Chairman McLaughlin?
Yes.
So we have amended that paragraph to read as we just stated previously. Next, I have Mayor Di Maria on the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the superintendent. Madam Superintendent, the policy states that a student's enrollment will be terminated immediately upon an initial determination by Everett Public Schools that a student does not reside in the district. Just a couple of questions. Will final determinations on residency be made by the superintendent, or will those decisions be delegated to another EPSD member?
So the attendance officers generally make the final determination? Yeah.
Okay. And is there any appeal process for students or families after a decision is made by the attendance officers?
We have not had or engaged in an appeal process.
Will we look into something like that? Can we put something like that?
I mean, if that's something we wanted to put in the policy, I would suggest that that be articulated as such. Again, whenever we create exceptions or other avenues, I just want to be respectful to the fact that this was asked for in order to be conservative. I think an appeal would be in the format of someone registering, again, with the appropriate documentation.
Okay. The policy states in cases where newly arrived families do not have the documents the district ordinarily uses to verify eligibility for enrollment, the district will work with the family to find alternative means to establish residency or proof of age. Who will be working with those families that can meet the documentation requirements?
The pick office.
Pick office, awesome, okay. And will that staff be giving guidance on how to handle these situations to make sure that all families are treated fairly and equitably?
We're actually receiving guidance directly from DESI that we'll be following, and they've also provided contact people and supports, not only at DESI, but also at the AG's office that can support us to ensure that we're, the documentation we're asking for is reasonable or the documentation that we're accepting is reasonable.
Okay. And final question. Is there an estimate of an additional positions or resources that will be needed to handle this projected volume of residency redeterminations that will be made under the policy?
At this point, we are not adding any personnel to do this mid-year, so it is something we're considering for our upcoming budget.
Okay. And just a comment that one of the functions of the school committee is to hire additional resources for the officers, so that may be something that we want to work with to see if we need, this is going to be a lot of work, you know, for three classes, so. And just the other thing, I know down in the pick office, there's a form that when Philip ran the pick office, it was like, it was called like a guardianship form. Have you ever heard of that form? Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the superintendent. I yield to school committee women, Cardello.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the superintendent. We understand the guardianship form. That's a document that says that you have guardianship of that student.
Right.
Okay. It has been in the past used differently. So if, I don't have guardianship of my grandson, but I take care of him.
Yes.
So if he didn't live in a house in Everett, I can't use my address for him. This was something that was going on, and some people knew that it was going on, and it got out of control.
Right.
Now, it wasn't a case where people were just living in houses, renting rooms. This was, I'm going to say, a grandmother or a daycare provider that was calling themselves and signing their form as a guardian. That is not a guardian. A guardian is a legal document that gives you rights. I have the right to talk to the nurses, talk to the teacher, pick him up if he's sick, take him to the doctors. I have that because my son and daughter-in-law have given me that, but I still don't have guardianship. So there is a difference. It's not even a fine line. There's a line that's drawn there, and people were abusing that in the past. So that's my take on what I learned about that from in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Cardello. Mr. Mayor, if you have any additional questions?
So I would just, you know, I don't know how we'd go about this, but that could be a place where I think we may have some issues. So, you know, maybe that's something that we could talk to the, I don't know if we can poll every child who has this guardianship form, you know, and then check their residency. That might be a good place for us to see if there are people that may not be using it as you stated, that should be used, right? They're using it differently, so. Just something, maybe you can let the pick office know on the resident officers, what do you call them today? The residency required officers or truer officers? They should check that out. But other than that, policy itself pretty similar to the one we already have in place?
No, yes and no. We do have additionally put here is the penalties that we're being more clear about, and the process for reestablishing residency, which we've never done before.
Right. And the grades at, kindergarten, third, sixth, and ninth?
Yes, so it says all students, when they approach the third, sixth, and ninth grade. So kindergarten would obviously be if you're registering for school for the first time, but you could register for school for the first time in any grade. So this is specifically for reestablishing residency. So we would not reestablish residency in kindergarten. We would simply establish residency. And then, so all students entering Everett High School at grade nine. So we've also outlined here which ones we will, how we will scale this in. So we're not going to do all of them at once. Next year will be the first year that, the first academic year that we reestablish residency, and we will be doing it for ninth grade only.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mangan next?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm full in support of this, and I would just say, to me, you brought up a good point about, you know, to find out something from pick office, or the superintendent or anybody else comes about some information that maybe to help us tighten this up in the future, we can certainly adopt this tonight, and always make an amendment to it down the road if we have to, you know, for small section, change some wording and so forth. So I would, you know, just stay there, but I'm in full support of this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
More favorable action?
If I may just ask a question from the chair, I just wanted to do it at the end respectfully. Madam Superintendent, through to you, do you by chance know how many cases there are of the guardians slip that the pick office deals with?
No.
Okay, I didn't know if it was a small number or a larger number throughout the district. Okay. Okay, see there, we have a motion on the floor for favorable action, and it has been seconded. I'll ask for a roll call vote on that.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
And just the other thing, I know down in the pick office, there's a form that when Philip ran the pick office, it was like, it was called like a guardianship form. Have you ever heard of that form? Do you, Mr. Chairman, to the superintendent? I yield to school committee women, Cardello.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the superintendent. We understand the guardianship form. That's a document that says that you have guardianship of that student.
Right.
Okay. It has been, in the past, used differently. So if, like, I don't have guardianship of my grandson, but I take care of him.
Yes.
So if he didn't live in a house in Everett, I can't use my address for him. This was something that was going on, and some people knew that it was going on, and it got out of control.
Right.
Now, it wasn't a case where people were just living in houses, renting rooms. This was, I'm going to say, a grandmother or a daycare provider that was calling themselves and signing their form as a guardian. That is not a guardian. A guardian is a legal document that gives you rights. I have the right to talk to the nurses, talk to the teacher, pick him up if he's sick, take him to the doctors. I have that because my son and daughter-in-law have given me that, but I still don't have guardianship. So there is a difference. It's not even a fine line. There's a line that's drawn there, and people were abusing that in the past. So that's my, my take on what I learned about that from in the past.
Thank you, Ms. Cardello.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, if you have any additional questions? So I would just, you know, I don't, I don't know how we'd go about this, but that could be a place where I think we may have some issues. So, you know, maybe that's something that we could talk to the, I don't know if we can poll every child who has this guardianship form, you know, that, and then check their residency. That might be a good place for us to see if there are people that may not be using it as, as you stated, that should be used, right? They're using it, they're using it differently, so. Just something, maybe you can let the pick office know on the resident officers, what do you call them, the truer, what do we call them today? The residency required officers, the truer officers? They should check that out. But other than that, policy itself pretty similar to the one we already have in place?
Uh, no, yes and no. We do have additionally put here is the penalties that we're being more clear about, and the process for reestablishing residency, which we've never done before.
Right. And the grades at, kindergarten, third, sixth, and ninth?
Yes, so it says all students, when they approach the third, sixth, and ninth grade. So kindergarten would obviously be if you're registering for school for the first time, but you could register for school for the first time in any grade. So this is specifically for reestablishing residency. So we would not reestablish residency in kindergarten. We would simply establish residency. And then, so all students entering Everett High School at grade nine. So we've also outlined here which ones we will, how we will scale this in. So we're not going to do all of them at once. Next year will be the first year that, the first academic year that we reestablish residency, and we will be doing it for ninth grade only.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. So, Mr. Mangan next?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm full in support of this, and I would just say, to me, you brought up a good point about, you know, to find out something from pick office, or the superintendent or anybody else comes about some information that maybe to help us tighten this up in the future, we can certainly adopt this tonight, and always make an amendment to it down the road if we have to, you know, for small section, change some wording and so forth. So I would, you know, just stay there, but I'm in full support of this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
More for favorable action?
If I may just ask a question from the chair, I just wanted to do it at the end respectfully. Madam Superintendent, to you, do you by chance know how many cases there are of the guardians that pick office deals with?
No.
Okay, I didn't know if it was a small number or a larger number throughout the district. Okay. Okay. See that we have a motion on the floor for favorable action, and it has been seconded. I'll ask for a roll call vote on that.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Cristiano?
Yes.
Chairman McLaughlin?
Yes. We have eight in the affirmative, zero negative. That means the motion has passed. This policy is now going to be in place, and...
Motion to move for reconsideration, second?
Second motion for reconsideration. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Okay, roll call vote on it? Or was it voice vote?
Ms. Cardello?
No.
Mayor Di Maria?
No.
Ms. Lambert?
No.
Mr. La Monica?
No.
Mr. Mangan?
No.
Mr. Marcus?
No.
Ms. Cristiano?
No.
Chairman McLaughlin?
No. So we have eight in the affirmative and eight in the negative. That means it has field, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? All those opposed? We are adjourned.
Good evening and welcome to the December 19th, 2022 School Committee Meeting. At this time, I would ask the Clerk to call the roll.
Student Rep. Riley Avalar.
Present.
Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Cardello.
Present.
Mayor Di Maria.
Present.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Mr. La Monica.
Present.
Mr. Mangan.
Present.
Mr. Marcus.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Present.
Ms. Sarni.
Here.
Chairwoman Christiano.
Present. We have ten members present. Please join me all in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending and those in the audience. Before we begin, I'd like to make sure I wish everybody my collective membership as well as the Superintendent and her team as well as our audience members a very Merry Christmas and a happy New Year and a healthy New Year. So, yeah. And a very happy Hanukkah to all. I understand that the lighting of the menorah was today and it was quite a take-in, so, you know, it's nice to see we're celebrating all the religions and, you know, all the holidays. And this is certainly always a special one for the little kids when Santa Claus comes. I know I have six grandchildren that are very excited for Santa Claus to come on Sunday. Yes. Mr. McLaughlin.
Madam Chair, I would, on personal note and following your remarks, I believe this evening will be your last meeting in the calendar year as our chairwoman. I just wanted to take the opportunity to say congratulations and job well done. Whether we agreed or disagreed here in the library, we always did it respectfully and we always moved the business of the school department along together with all of our colleagues. And thank you for your leadership throughout this year and look forward to working with you in the coming year. But a job well done as our chairwoman of this past school year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. It was very sweet of you, very thoughtful. And I just want to say that it was the honor of a lifetime to sit in this chair and with all of you. It's been quite a year and rewarding year. And I'm actually looking forward to sitting on the side of one of these chairs. I'm not going to tell you which one I'm going to sit at. I know I kind of have to go with seniority, but I'm looking forward to debating a little more and getting more involved in the ongoing discussion. So, thank you again. Thank you. Okay. At this time, I would ask the Superintendent to read the first order of business.
Roman numeral three is the reading of the records from December 5th, 2022.
Make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
Second motion.
Motion is made in second to waive the reading and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. You are so moved. Madam Superintendent.
Roman numeral four, public comment.
Make a motion. Then we open up public comment.
Motion is made in second to open up for public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We have public comment before us. But before I invite up the first speaker, just to remind everybody, we have
Good evening and welcome to the December 19th, 2022 School Committee Meeting. At this time, I would ask the Clerk to call the role.
Student Rep. Riley Avalar.
Present.
Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Cardello.
Present.
Mayor Di Maria.
Present.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Mr. La Monica.
Present.
Mr. Mangan.
Present.
Mr. Marcus.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Present.
Ms. Sarni.
Here.
Chairwoman Cristiano.
Present. We have ten members present. Please join me all in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for attending and those in the audience. Before we begin, I'd like to make sure I wish everybody, my collective membership, as well as the Superintendent and her team, as well as our audience members, a very Merry Christmas and a happy New Year and a healthy New Year. So, yeah. And a very happy Hanukkah to all. I understand that the lighting of the menorah was today, and it was quite a take-in. So, you know, it's nice to see we're celebrating all the religions and, you know, all the holidays. And this is certainly always a special one for the little kids when Santa Claus comes. I know I have six grandchildren that are very excited for Santa Claus to come on Sunday. Yes. Mr. McLaughlin.
Madam Chair, I would, on personal note and following your remarks, I believe this evening will be your last meeting in the calendar year as our chairwoman. And I just wanted to take the opportunity to say congratulations, job well done. Whether we agreed or disagreed here in the library, we always did it respectfully, and we always moved the business of the school department along together with all of our colleagues. And thank you for your leadership throughout this year, and look forward to working with you in the coming year. But job well done as our chairwoman of this past school year.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. It was very sweet of you, very thoughtful. And I just want to say that it was the honor of a lifetime to sit in this chair and with all of you. It's been quite a year and rewarding year. And I'm actually looking forward to sitting on the side of one of these chairs. I'm not going to tell you which one I'm going to sit at. I know I kind of have to go with seniority, but I'm looking forward to debating a little more and getting more involved in the ongoing discussion. So, thank you again. Thank you. Okay. At this time, I would ask the Superintendent to read the First Order of Business.
Roman numeral three is the reading of the records from December 5th, 2022.
Make a motion to waive the reading and place on file.
Second motion.
Motion is made in second to waive the reading and place on file. All those in favor? Those opposed? The ayes have it. You are so moved. Madam Superintendent.
Roman numeral four, public comment.
Make a motion. Then we open up public comment?
Motion is made in second to open up for public comment. All those in favor? Those opposed? The ayes have it. We have public comment before us. But before I invite up the first speaker, just to remind everybody, we have roughly ten folks that have signed in to speak. So if you could keep your remarks to about two minutes, that'd be great so that we all have an opportunity, those in the audience have an opportunity, all have a chance to say what they want to say and be heard. So, I first have Nancy Ciancetta. Did I say that right, Nancy?
Yes.
Great.
Hi, I'm Nancy Ciancetta from Lynn Street in Everett. None of us are perfect. We are not as good as our friends will claim, nor are we as bad as our enemies would have others believe. As dedicated and invested members of our community who are committed to our students' success, we try to look past political and personal differences and focus instead only on what is in the best interest of our students. For all of the challenges Everett has had, we have always been unified in the protection of our students and committed to the success of our schools. I have always felt that Everett is a great place to live and to work. Recent events have made me very concerned and uncomfortable. Not quite two weeks ago, a group of us got notified that we needed to sign up for a time slot for a meeting at Bein Street. These meetings were viewed as mandatory. The lack of communication about the reason and the requirements for these meetings caused great stress for many Everett Public School employees. The stress was definitely felt by other staff and students. The day of the meeting, I was asked many questions and was as honest and as transparent as possible with my answers. I left that meeting with more questions than answers. Some of the things I left wondering about included exit interviews and hiring practices. Some staff members requested exit interviews because of pay issues. Others did not feel safe here. They were denied exit interviews. Some people were appointed to positions without being interviewed. Others applied for posted positions but never had the applications confirmed and were never interviewed. Other jobs went almost a full school year without being filled, even though a number of qualified applicants were interviewed. Other positions seemingly appeared out of thin air. For example, the Superintendent was quoted in the newspaper as stating, "It was not a position that was originally planned. Although the position of Chief Equity Officer was never advertised, it would have been posted had Corey McCarthy declined the offer." In my experience, all communication with HR should be documented and all jobs should be posted, but this is not my area of expertise, so I could be wrong. These and other issues have created an atmosphere of confusion, fear, and distrust. If our key issue is our students, we should consider if they are all impacted by this tension. After all, the differences of adults should never affect our children. Most recently, students were offered free hours of community service for attending the last Common Council meeting. Students also reported that they were given talking points for that meeting. This is not the first time students have reported this. Prior to the walkout last year during the senior finals, students were pulled from class to meet with Mr. McCarthy, to plan for the event, and to make signs. While it is definitely worthwhile for students to be active in their community, it does appear that there may have been some political bias in at least several Everett Public School activities. What about academic performance? That is, after all, the key function of our schools. During the summer of 2021, DESI directed districts to assemble teams of teachers and school administrators to develop plans to recover from the learning loss due to the pandemic. That summer, Everett Public Schools let all of its core department chairs go. It left Everett High School a virtual ghost town. That year, neither teachers nor students had complete schedules until the second quarter. Academic performance suffered, as did the mental health of teachers and students. This year, after Christmas break, hundreds of students will retake the MCAS exams that they failed. These were failed over the last few years, when we should have been developing a plan for their success. While I agree with the Superintendent that tests aren't the only thing we should worry about, and really, they aren't. The reality is that if our students don't pass the MCAS exams, they don't get a diploma. A young adult without a diploma will, on average, earn a million dollars less over their lifetime than a high school graduate. I, for one, am not willing to condemn our students to that future. Our students deserve both academic and SEL supports. There is much to consider here. Given the lack of communication with all parties, the aura of fear and retaliation, and the questionable academic performance, I can't currently support an extension of the Superintendent's contract beyond June of the next school year. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Peggy Serino. Peggy? Do you just hold this?
Closer is better.
Closer is better. I'd like to know, how does the school committee feel about being lied to about Pope John? The guy in the corner office said he would do what the school committee, council, and taxpayers wanted. They want Pope John as a school, so the guy in the corner office says he's going with housing. Remember, he spent over $10 million for Pope John. He's going to give it to TND, saying, "We'll get our money back in taxes." That will only take 40 to 50 years. He's got St. Teresa's, Gavi Street, and he could use the old high school on Broadway, which is a tier down. Pope John isn't. It is a structurally sound building. He can negotiate for a piece of land from the Davis Group in return for tax breaks and help cleaning up the property. Once again, all of us were lied to. Now he wants to spend, the figure running around town is $50 million, on tin trailers with two doors to put our children in. Renovation of Pope John is $72 million. These are nothing like the modular homes School Committee William Millie Cadillo lives in, or the modular at the Webster. Plus, you need to remember, the modules at the Webster do not have bathrooms in them. So not only are you talking about modulars, you're talking about having to run sewer lines, water lines. That figure could go much higher. The council has the final say in this. The council is the one that has to vote on the final disposition of any property, not the guy in the corner office. They said they wanted Pope John for a school, and that is the way they should vote. The guy in the corner office is not an elected member of the school committee, but I understand he wants to be chairman of the school committee. Why? Doesn't he have enough to keep him busy with all the taxpayer money he's spending on his legal issues? Why would any school committee member who did all the work, and it's a lot of work to get elected, and I know it, I've been very involved for many, many years, vote to elect a non-elected person to be chairman of the school committee? Is it possible the guy in the corner office did something special for you? I don't know. Does anyone who votes for such a person deserve to be a member of the school committee? Should they ever be elected to the school committee again? I don't think so. We need to get our priorities straight. Remember, there are three separate parts of our government: the school committee, the council, and the mayor's office. How about if we all stay in our own lanes and do our own jobs and do an excellent job for the children? Because the children are what counts here. And I was at these council meetings when the young people spoke. And whether you're a teacher or a member of the school committee or a parent, you should be very proud of those young people. They were wonderful. Thank you. And I'd also like to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a healthy Happy New Year and a happy Hanukkah. Thank you. Thank you, Peggy. Next up, I have Marissa Steinberg. Marissa?
Hello. My name's Marissa Steinberg, and I am a teacher at the Parlin School in Everett. I'm here to speak to the importance of taking an immediate action to address the overcrowding in large class sizes at the Parlin School. With that being said, I do not see modulators being a feasible option at our school, as outdoor space is limited as is. The Parlin is a truly special place. However, there are major challenges for educators and inequities for students when it comes to class size and building space. I would welcome any of you to come visit my third-grade classroom to see firsthand the limits this environment creates. In fact, during an observation of my student-teacher, her college supervisor noted this inequity in her summative assessment. She wrote, "Of particular note is the fact that there were 27 students in a very small classroom in an old school. There was very little space for learning, other than students working at their desks. Although us educators at the Parlin are still able to create a positive learning environment for our students, I want our kids to gain the benefits of smaller class sizes and more space, an opportunity that other children are given." These benefits would include smaller reading groups, flexible seating, increased individualized teacher time, more frequent feedback in conferencing, and more. Specialist teachers would be able to have classrooms instead of being on a cart, which would allow for more enriching experiences. Win groups would have spaces to meet rather than utilizing hallway space or using the front and the back of a very small classroom for two separate groups, both of these which can be very distracting learning environments. Again, I ask that an immediate action be taken to provide a more equitable learning environment for our students here at the Parlin. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Ben Richter.
Hello. My name is Ben Richter, and I am a third-grade teacher at the Parlin School. I would like to also discuss the overcrowded situation at the Parlin. From viewing multiple school committee meetings, modulators has been discussed as a possible option. Modulators are detrimental to the school experience for both the students and staff. I urge you not to support a plan that takes away from our already limited recess yard or teacher parking. As a result of limited space, we currently have five classrooms in grades K to III. In grades IV, V, and VI, we only have space for four classes. The fourth grade started this school year with 29 kids in each class. Currently, each fourth-grade classroom at the Parlin has 32 children in it. Typically, we get an influx of students this time of year. In third grade, we already have 27 kids in each of our classrooms, which leaves us wondering what will happen next year. Having professional development with teachers from other schools across the district and other districts have given us a glimpse into what class sizes are like in other buildings. The class sizes are not equitable across the district. The Parlin is approximately 250 kids over capacity, or about 28 kids per grade, which is the size of a Parlin classroom. The Parlin School is already overcrowded, and I am truly impressed every day with the amazing things that teachers are able to do. It is no secret that having the classes this size is harmful to both the students and the staff. I hope that action will be taken in the near future to alleviate the overcrowded classrooms at the Parlin. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Vincent Lawrence Dixon. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, and happy holidays to everybody. My name is Vincent Lawrence Dixon, 60 Lake Street, Unit N, Winchester, Mass. I'm an active historian and community activist. My appearance today is in part as a member of the Education Committee of the Mystic Valley Area Branch of the NAACP. The primary concern of our Education Committee is always educational quality, while respecting the role of diversity as society evolves over the generations. While I am not a resident of Everett, I've had the pleasure of knowing many people in the city for years, so I have some understanding of some of the issues. This is a dense urban setting. The continuing transformation of Everett is noticeable, is my understanding that the now vacant Pope John XXIII School could be used as a restored school that would substantially address the overcrowding of the public school system and likely be most cost-effective. I remember a teacher, Newton, that I talked to years ago, and he said, "Size of class is everything." And he was excited that that particular year, Newton had gone from about 15 or 14 students to about 12 or 13. That one or two extra ones, he said, just provided everything in terms of quality. In an urban system, you're going to have density. You're not going to have those numbers, but you should be trying to work more in that direction. We in Winchester did use modulators during the reconstruction of our high school. And while they kind of worked, they also kind of didn't. And they were expensive, and they created more problems, and the facilities and the utilities and the electric bills, there was always supplemental expenses and costs from that. And that definitely was a lesson that maybe we shouldn't have gone with modulars and reconfigured because we had some other space. My sense of these issues is that there will continue to be crowding issues for some years because of a variety of factors. And in my opinion, it would be simply easier and likely cost-effective to update and restore an existing school. The ongoing investigations of civil rights issues, including by the U.S. Attorney's Office, point to the need to address potential systemic issues that could suggest a discontinuity between so-called traditional ways of doing business and newer demographics. In point of fact, all of us have deep immigrant backgrounds. Most all of us, somewhere in our family history, had members who faced economic, employment, housing, and even food insecurities, all the more so that we can appreciate that many of us are aware of those difficult past histories and can sympathize and seek to engage on these issues with newer residents and immigrants. Superintendent Tahal Yani has clearly grown in leadership, and numerous analytical comments suggest a dynamic response to what are profound and complex intersections of deep urban problems. While Massachusetts state leadership has at times been helpful, certainly more needs to be done. Recent events suggest that there will be yet more significant resources. The ballot question certainly will help with that, and state administrators to support to deal with these significant problems. And I think this is an opportunity that urban systems in particular will have coming up. I've reviewed the evaluation documents, by the way, over the last two cycles. While there are some issues that are noted, surely cleanliness being important, I can attest from being in a number of schools over the years that these issues are difficult, even though they need to be addressed and can usually always be improved. The encouragement and inspirational leadership of the Superintendent is substantially addressed and noted, and her engagement with many constituencies of a multilingual and multicultural urban environment. Certainly, the damage and disappointment that grew out of a prior school administration likely does provide some long-term damage that needs to be gotten beyond, and I'm sure that's an underlay that is not always talked about. The mix of academic and technical educational components in a system and municipalities such as Everett and the substantial efforts to improve public school operations in spirit are to be commended. While it is possible that as change goes forward and the social and emotional damage of the pandemic and other recent events has created barriers to improvement, any misunderstandings likely could be corrected by individuals of good faith. My role as a member of the Education Committee of the Mystic Valley Area Branch NAACP is to encourage strong community building in the context of complex diversity and economic challenges. I'd welcome any questions and provide good offices behind the scenes. I've done that in other places. Both my own educational background, I think, has been an interesting preparation, and I've worked with school superintendents and in the political arena dealing with issues over the years. And I think there's a lot of good resources here, and I got a lot of good opportunity. School committee, mayor, I wish you all a good holiday. And I think that simply getting together and thinking a little bit more in terms of teamwork as we look in the next year would be helpful, because this has been a tough couple of years, no matter who we are. And I think that resources can be put together. And just be careful that when you get to somebody who says, "Oh, this is a good temporary fix," that tends to be somebody who's got some money on the table that is going to cost the taxpayers. So hopefully, this has been helpful. Continue to be a friend of Everett in various ways, and occasionally stop for breakfast or at one of your Dunkins along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I have Mrs. Maria Bussel. Ms. Bussel?
I was reading a portion of the Superintendent's evaluation from last year, and was surprised to see that many of the Superintendent's failings were brought up, such as her demeanor, her facial expressions, and posture while debating difficult issues. Called out for changing her opinion when asked a previously discussed issue was brought up, and it was noted that she is expected to engage with parties in a professional and constructive manner. These things are all brought up by someone that could not display the same thing during a common council meeting. It's very sad to know that some things are expected of some and some things are expected of none. of none. The superintendent has also given quotes to renovate Pope John that is less than the $50 million for the modular units now proposed. The modular units have never been something that was supposed to be a fix. Pope John is a fix. Why is it that the common council agreed to keep Pope John a school, and only one person's opinion is actually being heard? Kudos to all the students that showed up to the council meeting last Monday night. They are our city's hope for a brighter future, and hopefully, by the time they are able to vote, Everett will return to the democracy it once was, not the dictatorship it now seems to feel like. And lastly, I know I shouldn't have to do this, but I would like to reiterate that I'm speaking this evening as a homeowner and taxpayer only. I should not have to suffer any retribution and retaliation for voicing my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bussel. Next up, I have Paula Staridi. Paula?
First, I want to thank and recognize all the high school students that came to the last Monday's city council meeting and spoke passionately about the need for the community and the youth to have a say on where the upper money was being spent. I also wanted to thank the hundred or so students who came to support their fellow classmates who spoke. You are all our best hope for a better world. Next, regarding the agenda item about delaying the January meetings. In the past year's school committee attendance record, I believe there's only been three meetings where everyone has attended. The mayor has missed 14 meetings, a couple have missed three, one member missed four, and another member missed six. So unless half of you are going to take vacation in January, I think you should stick to the schedule. The schools are in a crisis, the kids are suffering. I think the school committees members should stick to the schedule and get something done for these kids. Next, regarding the superintendent's evaluation, I'm pleased to see you rated her proficient. I have to say, after reading some of your comments a few times, it sounded like the committee members were reviewing two different people. I hope to get a better understanding once I get a chance to read your individual reviews of the superintendent. I am happy to see progress in comments that didn't mention bloody language and facial expressions in her job performance. Finally, regarding the agenda item on modulars. It's hard to believe, after six months that started with three community meetings in August, Councilor Tansy door-knocking and being told overwhelmingly by the Pope John abuddies they wanted Pope John to remain a school, then having Councilor Martin's take a survey where 75% of the residents wanted Pope John to remain a school, then having the Neighborhood Development Company, which were from the project, send an official statement that's obvious that Everett needs a school. And the N in the Neighborhood Development really stands for a neighborhood. Then, the city council and the school committee voiced their support to use Pope John as a school, and then having the mayor on record saying he would do whatever the school committee and the city council wanted, only to find out the mayor's word, in this case, was just a lie. Maybe he played Jew on the city council. First, he complained about taxes going up to renovate Pope John, then he hit the city council with a surprise $500,000 legal bill with the guarantee to expect more invoices. The city hired the same law firm the mayor is using for his personal lawsuits to answer questions from the Department of Justice on civil rights violations by the mayor, his administration, and possibly former city councillors. Then, at the next city council meeting, the mayor had the CFO come and tell the city council that there was a revenue shortfall due to the power plant, and the mayor was requesting $7 million in free cash to minimize the tax increase in 2023. Then, after he got all he wanted from the city council at the last Monday meeting, he sharked everyone saying no to Pope John as a school and willing to spend up to $50 million for modulars. The superintendent and her staff provided data and facts to alleviate the overcrowding of all the elementary schools, addressing 80% of the problem and improving school conditions for about 5,000 kids. What did the mayor provide? Any data, a project detail, any project plan? So he's willing to spend up to $50 million on modulars instead of renovating a school? Some members, former teachers and residents, have voiced their concerns. In some cases, modulars would be impossible to attach to the buildings. In some cases, will require taking recess space and parking from the teachers and staff. Where is the replacement land for the open space the mayor is proposing to take? Where are kids going to play, and where are people going to park? I'm sure you've heard of the saying, "Kiss, keep it simple, stupid." So instead of renovating a school that can be worked on immediately and worked on throughout the year, the mayor is dictating and cutting open four schools where work can only be done during the summertime, creating four separate projects that could possibly all encounter unforeseen issues instead of renovating an empty school building that was functional up to 2029. Everett's schools are in a crisis. The superintendent, the city council, the school committee, the abuddies, the majority of residents support renovating Pope John, except the mayor. So I ask, why is the mayor hell-bent on giving the Neighborhood Development Company the school for seniors, veterans, and affordable housing? If it's really for affordable housing, have the developers increase the percentage from 10% to 20% for affordable housing units in the developments for Everett residents? Is it the mayor can't accept he's wrong? Is it to punish the superintendent and her staff in hopes that they would give up and leave? My mother always said, "When something doesn't make sense, it's always about the money." The only winners here are the TND investors. They get a property worth between $30 and $50 million for free. I have to give TND credit for being transparent. They told us that the city, given the property to TND, they got additional funding from the government for the development. So who's the big winner in this deal? Not the kids, not the residents, not the taxpayers. You decide. In closing, this past May, U.S. Attorney Rachel Rollins, while being interviewed by Jim Browdy of the WGBH on racism and violence after the mass shooting in Buffalo supermarket, Jim Browdy asked the U.S. Attorney about Everett, since, as you may remember, Everett was in the news for a few months regarding racist comments by former Councilor DePero and members of the mayor's staff. Mr. Browdy promised to stick with the Everett story until closure, as he was concerned that an elected official and city workers were active participants in racist text messages and Zoom meetings, and nothing was being done by the mayor or state officials. She said, "It's up to Everett to decide what kind of city they wanted." The kids marched in May, and she heard their answers. What is yours? Please fight and do everything possible to make sure Pope John is renovated into a middle school. Thank you, and happy holidays.
You went a little low, Paula. Next up, I'm going to invite up Stephen Iannacco. Hope I said that right.
You said it correctly.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Stephen Iannacco, a resident and taxpayer. Tonight, I'd like to address the mayor's decision to add modulars to existing schools rather than renovating a school building that the city already owns, Pope John. It was difficult to watch him speak at the last council meeting. He contradicted himself on whether or not children are being taught in hallways, although it has been reported that there are children with IEPs actually meeting in hallways. The question I have for you regarding the use of modulars start with the exact location of these units. As the mayor, are any of you have been by any of the schools to walk around and see exactly where there may be room for them? Today, I drove by the back of the Carverian and see that currently there is ample parking for the staff. If modulars are placed back there, where will teachers and staff park? Numerous parking spots would be lost, forcing many of the staff to park on the surrounding streets, vying for parking spaces where not only residents of those streets, but also parents who may need to visit the school. What about recess area for the children? Should that area be reduced or done away with? Does that help our children in any way? What about green space? The front of the Carverian has a nice park-like atmosphere. Will that be removed? What is the mayor's plan to come up with green space to replace it? My second question, and this applies to all schools. Has the mayor done his homework as far as construction costs go? The mayor suggests all modulars would attach to existing school buildings, all with foundations. What costs are expected to break into the sides of existing structures, digging and pouring foundations? Having utilities added to these new spaces would be affected to schools needed to be reconfigured for access to the additions. Are children going to be losing classrooms? Has the possibility of rerouting certain underground utilities been explored? Does the mayor know if that's even possible? It gets into depth. You need architects, engineers, site plan, and the list goes on and on and on. This is for not one, but for five schools you're talking about. You may encounter different situations at every location. Costs could dramatically increase as issues arise. The next question. What is the square footage of the modulars, and how does that compare with the square footage of Pope John? Has the mayor taken the time to explain how many students will be benefiting from these modulars? How many classrooms will that give every school? How many desks does each of these classrooms hold? The mayor has not mentioned cafeteria space. At the council meeting, there was a student who explained that because of the overcrowding, not all students could get into the cafeteria to get in line to get food. Nowhere has this been addressed by the mayor at all.
Okay, Mr. Iannacco.
So now we have hungry children. I'm closing now.
Thank you.
Thank you. The mayor also mentioned the additional costs associated with Pope John as a school, but has he provided the additional costs which occurred by the modulars? How do they compare? The taxpayers would like to know in black and white what the costs are. Finally, to wrap things up, why in the world would the mayor make a decision to give away a building that the taxpayers currently owe $10.5 million for? Doesn't make any sense to me. Doesn't make any sense to any of you. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful holiday, everybody.
Thank you. Next up, I have Sandra Donnelly.
Madam chairman, do we need to extend public participation?
Sure. Let's extend it.
I'll make a motion to extend it.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded to extend the public participation for another 10 minutes, tops. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. 10 minutes, but that doesn't mean you have 10 minutes.
Hi, my name's Sandra Donnelly. My daughter Savannah goes to the Madeleine English. I went to the Essex Aggie Open House. Because EHS does not have a trade, and she loved it, and our plan is for her to go there. She interacted with all the shops and loved all the animals on-site. After taking the school, I said to my daughter, "Would you like to go here?" Her answer was, "Yes, I would love it." Just the look on her face was just what I needed to see. The school is ideal and works with kids on IEPs. Like I said before, Savannah wants to become a vet. It's hands-on for her again. I think we should have a full vogue. This open house was one of the best. I also would like to recognize a teacher who has been with her since second grade, Nelda O'Neill. With the program, the Wilson, my daughter is striving, actually about to graduate the Wilson this year in January. I could not be more prouder of her. It's because of teachers like her that will go out of her way for the student. We recently had a death when she was eight, and it was my father. Nelda O'Neill was there every step of the way for her, if you needed her. My father was like her dad, in the meaning that Ms. O'Neill is the greatest person I could give thanks to. My daughter will be 13, and as a 13-year-old, who really knows what they want to do? She really wants this, and I will do everything in my power to make her wish come true. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
We have one final speaker, unless anybody else wants to say something. Gene O'Brien, Mr. O'Brien?
How are you? Gene O'Brien, music director, Everett Public Schools. I'd like to, first of all, happy holidays, merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah. And one of the biggest things we do in this community is we have great events and great concerts, and I'd like to invite everybody tomorrow night to the gala at Everett High School here downstairs in the auditorium. We have alumni that come back. We had one that flew in from Alabama, and they're practicing right now downstairs. We had over 10 concerts this week. Pretty exciting news that we're back after three years, and we'd like to invite the entire community out to our event tomorrow night. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Is there any... Mr. Murray?
Ben Murray. I live in the city of Waverly Ave, and I'm also a member of the Everett Teachers Association, a building representative, and a member of multiple negotiation committees. First off, I just want to congratulate the superintendent on getting proficient on her evaluation. I think that's quite the feat, considering that what people had to go on here was evidence. And the evidence would probably say exemplary, but proficient, I guess we'll take it. As far as the mayor's taking it on the chin a lot tonight, it's been a lot of, it's very Voldemort vibe going on here, so I don't want to belabor the point. I just want to point out that this is a pattern of disdain for Everett's youth. He refuses to release money from the city budget for our children. He's held on to S.R. money. He's one of the few cities in the state that doesn't fund above and beyond the bare legal minimum necessary. That is a pattern of behavior. That is a pattern that shows how he feels about Everett's children. This is not personal. I know him as a great dad, a great family man. He loves his kids. He loves his kids' activities. That's all great. But the evidence is clear. This is disdainful of the children that it is your responsibility to take care of. That is it. That's your responsibility. The school committee has no other responsibility. It is the students of Everett. The idea of stuffing my child into a trailer in January is reprehensible. It is ridiculous. A real city that is really on the move builds and maintains schools. Every school causes property values to go up. That is proven. You can Google it after the meeting. So again, these modulars are a slap in the face to Everett's parents and Everett's families. And then the price tag, $50 million, that came out of the blue, $50 million, $100 million, $20 million, we don't know. We do know $72 million for a state-of-the-art middle school at Pope John, that would be a jewel in Everett's crown, drive property values up and bring families to the city. So I'm not sure where those who support the idea of modulars or support the idea of treating Everett's parents and children with disdain are coming from, but I hope, in the holiday season, and happy Hanukkah, everybody, you guys get a chance to look inside and do the right thing. Do the right thing going forward. Fight for your kids. It's the only reason you guys were elected. Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. There are no other speakers. I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to close public comment?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to close public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. We have closed public comment. Madam superintendent?
Thank you. Roman numeral five is the report of the student representative.
Good evening. I would like to start off by refuting the idea that has been presented, that students have been or are being persuaded to participate in city protests or meetings. The... The walkout last year was created by a student. His name I will not share, since I haven't spoke to him about this. The council meeting was shared on social media by students long before any of us knew community service hours were offered. Everett High teachers have supported initiatives started by students, not force them upon us. Everett High students have voices and have opinions that we are not afraid to share. I participated in the walkout last year, and I can say that I was never pulled out of class for anything related to it. We saw something wrong, we spoke out, and we acted, and will continue to do so. And if I didn't-
Please, please, I'm just, please, no. We have to be quiet while, while our student representative is speaking, okay? Thank you. Go ahead.
And if I didn't work, I would have been there on Monday with my classmates. People are too focused on the how. How did the kids band together at the city council meeting? How did they plan a walkout? But not the why. Why did it take a walkout for a racist official to step down? Why do students feel as if they don't have a voice in this city? Please don't undermine the will of my peers. On a lighter note, donations for the last, for the last two weeks, the EHS Key Club has held a food drive and sock drive. They have also spread the word and added the Parlance, City Hall, and Caverion as host sites. They have collected tons of donations, including over 350 items of food and boxes filled with socks. Cold Feet Warm Hearts will be picking up their sock donations tomorrow, and will be delivering the donated food to the Connolly Center this week. EHS Mini Spirit Week started today. Today was anything but a backpack day. There were students bringing pots, trash cans, hangers, and even carts to hold their school supplies. Tomorrow will be Marvel vs. DC, where students can dress in costumes or merchandise supporting one of the two studios. Wednesday will be Festive Sweater Day, and Thursday, we will bring it back to our elementary school days with Polar Express Day. In the morning, seniors will eat cookies in the cafeteria, then go up to the auditorium to watch the Polar Express. Last week, the senior class sold candy cane grams in order to support prom and other future senior activities. Students were able to buy candy canes and write messages to peers and/or teachers on Christmas cards. The grams will be sent to the recipients in homeroom this week. Starting last week and going into this week, the Red Cross Club has started selling hot cocoa kits and chocolate-covered pretzels in the cafeteria during lunches. For sports, boys and girls basketball are starting off their season's great with a 2-0 record. Hockey has also started their season strong with a current 1-1 record. Indoor track has had two meets with several individuals placing. Girls varsity basketball will be having another home game tomorrow at 7:00 PM, and hockey will be on Wednesday at 5:00 PM. EHS held its second quarter parent-teacher conferences this past Thursday, December 15th, after progress reports grades were handed out to students. Student ambassadors were present to assist any parents to certain classrooms or translate for better communication. The yearbook club also had a hot cocoa bar with various toppings. The money raised will be going for senior class yearbooks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, make a motion to re-accept the student report and place it on file?
I'll second. Motion is made and seconded to accept the student representative's report and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, Riley. That was great. Next up, Madam Superintendent?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may ask, that we take item seven, items, items seven, number one, item submitted by school committee member out of, actually, item eight, number one, subcommittee reports on the ad hoc superintendent report, out of order, in the form of a motion?
Could you repeat your request?
Yes, my apologies. I request we take number eight, item one, the subcommittee report on the ad hoc superintendent out of order.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded to take item eight, Roman numeral one, out of order. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Ms. Lambert, oh, let me ask the superintendent to first read the matter that's before us.
It's the ad hoc superintendent, subcommittee meeting from December 13th, 2022.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to, the ad hoc subcommittee on superintendent met last week and reported out favorably on the superintendent's composite evaluation, and I just wanted to put that before the committee, before the official vote. And I'll put that in the form of a motion to accept.
Motion is made and seconded to accept the ad hoc committee's report and recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. You are so moved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Roman numeral six is the report of the superintendent, and we'll start with the superintendent's So good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight at our last meeting of 2022. We'll begin with a huge shout-out to EHS graduate and Everett resident Derek Barbosa. Derek collected and delivered more than 300 toys to the Caverion School on December 10th as part of the school's Breakfast with Santa festivities. This marks the second consecutive year that Derek led this effort to assist Everett families during the holiday season. In the group photograph on this slide, Derek is pictured with Principal Alex Naumann, Assistant Principal Keith Spencer, Guidance Counselors Catherine Irizarry, Camilla Booba, and Eric Piazza, and PTO Vice President Christine Reno. I'm continually impressed by how much our graduates give back to our community. Derek embodies the highest level of civic-mindedness, and he's a credit to Everett, his family, and our school district. The Everett Public Schools also extends a big thanks to the Everett Kiwanis Club for renewing its annual tradition of generosity by donating hats and gloves to our students. Kiwanis leaders visited the Whittier School on Monday, December 5th, to personally donate 40 dozen sets of hats and gloves. This slide includes a photo of Whittier students and Kiwanis Club President Stephanie Martins, Treasurer Marlene Zizza, Past President Pat Roberto, President-elect Fred Capone, Whittier Principal Michael McLucas, and Assistant Principal Cara Fidalgo. On Wednesday, December 14th, the Whittier School welcomed the school community to its annual holiday concert. Under the direction of music teacher Brian Spencer, students sang holiday favorites such as Jingle Bells, Deck the Halls, and Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer, and some contemporary tunes like Hip-Hop Reindeer and Pop Bang Crack. Thanks to our theater teacher, Kristen Coffey, who led the students in a reading of 'Twas the Night Before Christmas. Our band teachers Eric Holmes, Michael Moore, and Michael Castellano guided students through winter classics like Hot Cross Buns and Jolly Old Saint Nick. The program concluded with the school-wide chorus. The students did not disappoint, as our packed cafeteria of parents and families were delighted with the performances, and now they are in the full spirit for the season. And a huge congratulations to all of our students, music teachers, and educators who contributed to the array of holiday concerts, programs, and events that have been held over the past couple of weeks. With that in mind, I would like to remind everyone that Everett High's Christmas Gala is set for tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, as Mr. O'Brien mentioned. Again, this is a free event for the community, and it is a fantastic way to get into the holiday spirit. The show will feature a variety of EHS bands and groups, as well as alumni and our music Under the direction of music teachers and string instructors, Mr. Cosmeric and Ms. Polska, the district's K-8 students have been holding violin concerts this month. The program was called Frosty's Big Idea, and it gave the students the chance to perform for their families and loved ones. Again, congratulations to our young students for their hard work and their talent. The Webster Extension, led by head teacher Jessica Redler, held its Winter Wonderland Event on Saturday, December 10th. There was a great turnout of approximately 200 people. Santa Claus was on hand for pictures, and guests were greeted to a delicious breakfast. There were arts and crafts and a showing of the movie Olaf for the young students. Again, my sincerest thanks to everyone in the district who has worked so hard, from planning events to decorating our schools over the past two weeks. Keeping with the theme, the Lafayette School Winter Festival was Thursday, December 15th. The event was a huge success, with more than 500 tickets sold to families and the Lafayette community. Santa Claus was there, as was Olaf from Frozen. There were food, activities, and music. Kudos to the Lafayette PTO for organizing the event, and for all of the teachers who volunteered their time to make sure the students and families had a great time. We recently had the honor of sending students from the Caverion School and Everett High to a pair of Massachusetts College of Art and Design youth programs. One is called Saturday Studios. The second is Portfolio Development. Our students, who respectfully ask, they go unnamed, attended these programs free of charge, thanks to a scholarship that our art coordinator, Carrie DeChico, has secured during these, during each of the last two school years. Through these programs, students enroll in illustration and portfolio development courses at the college, where they receive individual attention from the professors. They are also provided with high-quality art materials. Students develop their technical skill and their artistic voice. They learn about the entire artistic process, from brainstorming to storyboarding to sketching. This opportunity is both enjoyable and challenging, and certainly ideal for our students who are particularly interested in art. In addition to Ms. DeChico, a special thank you to the art teachers who helped the students complete the registration process, so they could take advantage of the chance to work with the masters at the Massachusetts College of Art and Design. The Everett High School Boys Basketball Team has been invited to play in the annual Andrew James Lawson Foundation Invitational on Saturday, January 21st at the TD Garden. Tickets are $20 and can be purchased by contacting head coach and EHS Vice Principal Stanley Chamberlain. We will play Beverly at 1:30 PM in a regulation game that counts in the standings. The tournament is played in memory of Andrew James Lawson, who had Down Syndrome and was 27 years old when he tragically passed away after a two-year battle with cancer. He attended public schools in Norwell and greatly enjoyed and benefited from inclusion in both academics and sports. I look forward to seeing the Garden filled with crimson on the 21st, thanks to Coach Chamberlain and the EHS Athletic Department for securing this opportunity for our student athletes. And who knows, maybe we will be back in the Garden in March for the Eastern Mass Finals. Earlier this year, we highlighted the fact that we started after-school robotics clubs at our five K-8 schools. I am happy to report that this initiative has been a huge success. On December 10th, teams from the Caverion, Lafayette, English, Parlance, and Whittier Schools competed in their inaugural First LEGO League Regional Competition on Saturday, December 10th, at Revere High School. In total, the EPS had 46 students and 10 coaches participating in the competition. First LEGO League Challenge Teams engage in research, problem-solving, coding, and engineering by building and programming a LEGO Spilkey Prime robot. During competitions, the robots have to perform specific tasks. Madeleine English Team Number One, coached by Bruce Jaffe and Jennifer Cavalieri, finished fifth, while the Whittier Team, coached by Dawn Monroe and Michelle Conken, earned ninth place honors. Both qualified for the state championship at WPI in Worcester. We heard from educators in other districts who are familiar with this competition that having two teams qualify for states their first time out is as impressive as it sounds. Thanks also to coaches Tori Milano and Kristi Mercury from the Caverion, Jam Santiri and Tenzin Leyden from the Lafayette, and Brian Benson and Alessandro Cornelio from the Parlance. And thanks to K-8 STEM Director Rupi Cor for helping launch this program. We are looking to expand our after-school STEM offerings in the spring and next year. We would like to see greater capacity for middle school students, as well as new opportunities for other grade groups. I know that everyone would agree that the only season as exciting as the holiday season is the budget season. And fittingly, it won't be too long after we return from the New Year's break before the FY24 budget appears on our radar. The timeline begins when the governor releases her budget. It is important to note that this is normally the third week of January, but could run later as a result of the uncapping transition in the governor's office. Throughout February and into early March, the EPS will hold internal budget meetings with the leadership team, the Budget Office, principals, and department heads. We are tentatively proposing the Budget Committee of the whole for March 13th, followed by the public hearing on March 20th. Again, this could be impacted depending on when the governor's budget is released, but I will most certainly update this timeline as needed. The tentative date for the joint convention is May 13th, and we will make our district budget presentation to the city council during the third week of May. Like we did last year, we will extend opportunities for you on the school committee to sit in on our internal budget meetings to give you a clear look about the methodical and exhaustive way in which we complete the process. Obviously, we will do this in a way that doesn't conflict with open meeting laws. I always look forward to working with CFO Ano Janth, Budget and Grants Director Shirley Pang, central office staff, and people throughout the district on making sure we are using every dollar smartly and strategically. I take great pride in our budgeting work and the fact that my administration has never sprung something unexpected on the community, city hall, and/or the city council regarding our finances. I am pleased to announce that the EPS has entered into a partnership with JET. Journey into Education and Teaching, or JET, offers a pipeline for the teaching profession for paraprofessionals. JET offers a two-part pathway that allows Paris to earn a bachelor's degree and a Massachusetts teacher license, all at a very affordable cost. JET's unique model focuses on urban communities like ours, where the need is greatest. The program recruits diverse paraprofessionals without bachelor's degrees who already work in the classroom, know their communities, and have the makings of great teachers. The support model includes financial aid and college admission, guidance, as well as one-on-one mentoring from veteran educators. We are in the process of sharing this opportunity with our talented and dedicated paraprofessionals, hoping that interested educators take advantage of this chance to get their BA and become certified to lead a classroom. Students on Everett High School's Debate and Espanol League Team had the chance to take a dual enrollment debate course at Suffolk University this fall. The students showed thoughtfulness, curiosity, and generosity as they deepened their debate and critical thinking skills, and developed their original arguments on this year's policy debate resolution, all under the direction of Suffolk instructors. This year's policy debate resolution in Boston and across the country reads as follows: "The United States federal government should substantially increase its security cooperation with the North Atlantic Treaty Organization in one or more of the following areas: artificial intelligence, biotechnology, cybersecurity." When our students return, our students have the chance to make their final presentations on Wednesday, December 7th, at Suffolk. They spoke about their research, their arguments, and the story and journey behind their arguments. When our students return after the new year, our BDL team will focus on biotech, particularly bioengineering or genetically-modified foods. The Boston Debate League offers debate and argumentation programs for young people in greater Boston, with a commitment to serving students of color and other students who have not, not traditionally received these educational opportunities. I would like to now switch gears and talk about the superintendent evaluation. Unlike other educators whose performance evaluations are confidential, the superintendent's evaluation is conducted in public pursuant to open meeting laws. There are four tenets upon which these evaluations are conducted. First, there must be additional attention to the process in order to ensure that the evaluation is fair and transparent. Second, the evaluation is a critical mechanism for ongoing communication between the superintendent and the school committee. When done well, the superintendent evaluation process serves as a foundation for strategic planning within the district as a whole. The third tenet is around two-way communication. Both school committee members and superintendents report that ongoing two-way communication about perceptions of the superintendent's performance and progress on goals is critical. Finally, regular communications around goal progress keep the evaluation process focused, and help to ensure that there are no surprises at the end of the evaluation cycle. I would like to thank the school committee members for their feedback and for their hard work in completing my evaluation. I appreciate the time, effort, and consideration that went into the responses provided. I, of course, am always happy to receive positive feedback, so I take great pride in many of the comments that were made, as well as the ratings that were awarded. And for those areas where I fell short, I look forward to demonstrating improvement in this upcoming year. That all being said, there were comments from one particular evaluation that I found to be inappropriate and accurate, and fell outside the four tenets of the DESI evaluation. As is my right, I would like to provide a response to those comments on my evaluation. I will also be placing my response online alongside my evaluation, again, as is my right. While my online responses will be more in-depth and respond to all of these particular comments, for the purposes of this evening, I'm going to focus on four pieces of feedback from this particular evaluator's comments. These are the items that I feel most compelled to speak on, not just on behalf of myself, but also on behalf of my team. To start, the evaluator says, "The inability and unwillingness of the school administration to communicate and share responsibility with the school committee, as well as principals and vice principals, is unsatisfactory. Oftentimes, it feels like certain members of the school committee hear about issues, awards, and needs at the same time as the general public and others hear more frequently. In my view, the responsibility to share information, rectify issues, and care for our students often feels like it's being done within a vacuum." our students often feels like it's being done within a vacuum,' end quote." I wanted to begin with this one because to charge me with doing things in a vacuum is staggering. Compared to who? The previous administration? I have to vehemently defend myself here. I am gracious not only with this committee, but also with the directors and the school leaders in providing appropriate opportunities to engage in debate, contribute opinions, and collaborate on projects and initiatives. To provide two salient examples, I include school leaders and directors in important decision-making, as evidenced by the new budget process and the new hiring process that I've implemented during my administration. School leaders and directors now have input and decision-making power where they previously did not. Second, this comment demonstrates a clear lack of understanding of the role of the school committee, as it is my job as the superintendent to handle the day-to-day operations of the district, and not upon the school committee to rectify those issues. Thus, I am being rated negatively here based on a perception that is actually no longer legal under ed reform. There is also a lack of understanding of the overall staffing and structure. I meet directly with principals, who then communicate with their vice principals and their staff. Admittedly, there are certain times that I communicate with the chair of the school committee or the chairs of the subcommittees, and there are other times that I communicate to the full committee. I've been very clear about the protocols I use for determining what gets communicated, and to whom, and when. I have even asked for feedback in the case that members would like to change that protocol. The only time I received feedback was when one member said I need not come to the school committee meetings or provide my superintendent updates at all. At that point, I clearly advocated for more communication and FaceTime to provide messaging to the entire committee all at once. It is important to note that this evaluator has also never reached out to me to ask me for information that I did not provide. While I do communicate some items with the chair or subcommittee chairs only, if other members ask questions, I am always responsive. The communication structure is created for efficiency, not to promote a lack of transparency, so I'm always happy to share information unless doing so would infringe upon the privacy of individual staff members or students. Finally, the feedback states that "it feels like certain members of the school committee." This demonstrates that the comments and ratings from this particular evaluator are based on feelings and not fact. In another example, the evaluator states "it is my opinion that the issue with the cleanliness of the schools is a prime example of mismanagement. I believe that the lack of management of staff and internal controls or staff to ensure cleanliness of buildings, especially during COVID-19, was a material factor in the overall degree of cleanliness." First, I would like to again emphasize that evaluations for all educators should be based on facts and not opinions, and evidence and not beliefs. I provided a comprehensive set of artifacts and was willing to provide any additional informations and artifacts as requested. However, this particular evaluator based their comments on information that I believe to be untrue and based in emotion. Second, cleanliness during COVID was managed not by myself, but by another individual for whom this evaluator voted to have their contract extended, despite these clear concerns about cleanliness, and despite the fact that the contract did not fall under the school committee's purview. In my case, however, the evaluator refused to even enter discussions regarding my contract, which I believe demonstrates bias and disparate treatment. Third, the evaluator does not make mention of any of the decisions or plans that were made in order to correct the concerns regarding cleanliness. That being said, I am willing to take this feedback to heart, and I will be working with the SEIU to determine a new or different approach to cleaning schools, as this clearly remains an area of concern. In a third example, the evaluator states "professional development dates should be targeted towards the audience. For example, the first professional development day at the beginning of this year, although a nice concept, was reportedly not productive for a majority of the audience according to the many educators. On Election Day, educators could pick their professional development topic. This, in my opinion, should be the focus moving forward. Additionally, it is my opinion that the administration should assess the consistency of communication with all school leaders, not just with those whom there is a social relationship," end quote. I have several concerns about this comment. First, on one hand, the evaluator articulates approval with the second professional development day, but rates me only based on their individual opinion of the first professional development day. Second, there needs to be alignment throughout the district in our instructional focus and also in our understanding and implementation of best practices. District-wide efforts require district-wide professional development. This is common amongst all school districts. While educator choice is important, it is not realistic to always allow educators to select all of their own PD. If that occurred, it would be difficult to have a district-wide vision, mission, or instructional focus. That being said, we do provide our educators with PD options as much as we are able, while also remaining mindful that we have statewide standards and requirements that we must fulfill. The evaluator states the date was "reportedly not productive for a majority of the audience according to many educators." Where are the statistics and surveys to back up this statement? Reported by whom and where? We conducted our own post-PD survey, so I do have actual statistics to cite. Plus, I received in writing sentiments that contradict what the evaluator is stating. An evaluation cannot be based in anecdotes and generalizations, but must be grounded in data and evidence. The evaluator states that I should communicate with all school leaders and not just the ones with whom I have a "social relationship." To the evaluator, I ask, "With whom do I have social relationships?" I can vouch for the fact that I do not, had and have not, socialized with any school leaders ever. The evaluator will not be able to produce any evidence to back up this statement, as it is wholly untrue and demonstrates the evaluator's willingness to fabricate information. Additionally, I have regular school leader huddles and meetings with principals, in which they all receive the exact same amount of FaceTime. When I email principals, I email them collectively unless it is an issue to do specifically with their school. I communicate with all principals equitably. My staff meetings are formal in nature, and there is nothing selective or social about For my last example, the evaluator states "administration engages some, but not all of the administrators, staff, students, families, and community groups." I feel that engagement is currently limited. I would like to see a more wholesome approach of inclusivity, not just utilizing and engaging with those who there is a current relationship with, but expanding relationships throughout the community, end quote. Again, the evaluator does not provide specific examples of those who are engaged and those who are not, but rather makes sweeping statements and insinuates that there is bias at play. I admit that in my two-plus years in the role, I have not succeeded in engaging 100% of groups and 100% of people. Engagement is ongoing and takes time. But is the accusation that I have refused to engage certain groups? If so, I would like to hear examples. Finally, the reference to being wholesome is misogynistic and offensive, period. I would like to know if the previous superintendent, or rather, any superintendent across the state is being evaluated based on their ability to be wholesome. As I stated, I refuse to let myself down or my team down by failing to respond to the unfounded and far-flung sentiments and opinions which were placed into the record by this one evaluator. There should have been no expectation or hope that I would allow such statements to be made without me exercising my right to respond publicly and in writing. Thank you for hearing my response. The in-depth response will be sent specifically to the evaluator and subsequently placed on our website alongside my evaluation. In closing, happy holidays to everyone in Everett, especially our students, staff, and families. As a reminder, the break begins with a 12:00 PM dismissal on Thursday, December 22nd. There will be no school on Friday, December 23rd, and students do not report the following week. The holiday break will extend into the week after, as there is no school on Monday, January 22nd. Students will return on January 3rd. Another reminder, we are distributing free COVID-19 test kits to all students and staff prior to the start of the holiday vacation. This is not part of a mandatory or DESI initiative. It is simply something we were able to offer to everyone to use at their discretion. We hope it helps keep everyone safe over the holidays. I hope you all have a safe and enjoyable holiday season with your family and loved ones. I am happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Do we have, does anybody have any questions of the superintendent?
Make a motion that we place the superintendent's report on file.
Motion is made in second to accept the superintendent's evaluation.
Update.
Update. What was the motion again, Mike? I'm sorry, Mr. McLaughlin.
Just favorable, place the superintendent's update on file.
Okay. Motion is made in second to place the superintendent's update on the evaluation on file. All those in favor?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I apologize. Just for the record, Mrs. McConner, you said "on the evaluation." So it's just the report. It's not "on the evaluation," so it's just the superintendent's report.
Okay.
Not on the evaluation, because you mentioned "evaluation" at the end. I just want to make sure that that's not.
Okay, so motion is made in second to accept the superintendent's update.
Place it on file.
And place it on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it? You have so moved, Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Item number two is to request approval of the superintendent's evaluation.
Make a motion for favorable action?
Motion is made in second for favorable action. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor DiMaria?
I will abstain from the process.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. LaMonica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin? Ms. Sarnie?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Nine in the affirmative, one abstention. You have approved the superintendent's evaluation. And just for the viewing audience at home, is this already online? So if you can go onto the Everett Schools website.
It's located under News, and I believe will be updated under the District Profile.
Okay, and so it's located under News and an update to the District's profile, just to let everybody know if you want to read it in its entirety. You know, it's interesting. Next up, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Item number three is to request approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Everett Teachers Association and the Everett School Committee. We are excited to announce that we have worked with the ETA on a memorandum of agreement that includes provisions for BCBAs, as well as for new teaching positions we are establishing for an evening school. However, we are still finalizing details of the wording in the MOA, so I would respectfully request that we make a motion to postpone this until our next meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Mangan?
Well, again, this relates to a position that my daughter holds, so even postponing it, I feel like me voting on it at all, making any action, would be inappropriate. So before that vote is taken, Madam Chair, I'm just going to recuse myself from this particular vote. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Did we get a copy of that in the package?
No, because we're still finalizing the wording.
All right, we'll get it before the vote. Time to read it. Thank you.
Ms. Cardillo?
Thank you. Because it is the last meeting, really, we should be just referring it back to sponsor and bringing it back in the meeting.
No.
What? It's the last meeting of this year, though.
No, but it's not the end of the term.
It does continue, I know, but, no? Okay.
Motion is made in second to postpone this to our first meeting in January. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it? You have so moved, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Item number four is discussion of next steps for modular classrooms throughout the district. So we have learned that Pope John is not going to be made available to the Everett Public Schools. I thank those of you on this committee and in this library who will help to make our case for a 7th and 8th grade junior high school in the former Pope John Building. In lieu of Pope John, we are planning to move forward with a modular solution. Thus, it appears on tonight's agenda, so all of you can weigh in. The past has taught us that solving overcrowding in the EPS is something that fades in and out of focus, so we need to keep pushing forward. So my question to this group is, what are the next steps? I happily and anxiously yield the floor to hear how you would like for us to move forward.
I have Mr. Marcus first.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Since we're going to go in, there's a lot to find out here. Wouldn't we need a professional engineer just to get some information of what is really going on with those, how much that would really cost if we're going to do that? Because that's a whole, every one of these schools, you know, is different. And I'm just trying to think, you know, I was looking at all the schools, which you know I went out to almost all of them, and it's a tough situation, like somebody here said it too, and I was looking at the Parlin School, there's no place to put anything there. I mean, in the back, and you can't take away the parking in the back of the Caverian School, and that would really obstruct the front. It's a beautiful, you know, they fixed the grass up, so this has got to be like a, we can batter this around, but we need professional people to do this, not us. So I'm just making that suggestion that we have to hire like an engineer, a professional one. Thank you.
I thought we did the educating and the city did the building.
Huh?
I thought we, you know, we did the education piece in City Hall, city government did the building, but...
Yeah, we...
I don't mean to...
I wanted to ask the superintendent a quick question. Remember, we had $2 million for the Caverian School? The $2 million was in the budget last year?
Yes.
Now, we gave it back to them, right?
No, it was not approved by the City Council to come to the schools.
It was back with us.
But yes, it was transferred to us. Or it's on our lines, yes.
Right, we better hold on to that. Thank you.
Indeed.
I have, next I have Ms. Sarnie.
Thank you. On the mod, you said about $30 million. You think they're going to be roughly, do we have an estimate on 34?
For the modulators, I wouldn't, I don't think that I'm qualified to make that estimate. We're doing it at five schools, but we're doing it for different numbers of students at each school. Also, the specs at each school are different, so I'm not sure what that's going to look like and how difficult it will be, and so how that will impact the building. But it did sound, I know people have been quoting $50 million, I think it did sound like something like that at the City Council meeting, but again, I don't believe we have any hard numbers.
Maybe we can find out through the city, through the mayor and his team, if there's any buildings we can rent, till we find out what we can do down the road, because modulators, I can't see throwing money away. And, you know, if we can rent a building somewhere to put students in, till we either get a new school being built for the time being to put $50 million in for modulators, and, you know, we're hearing people, they don't want them, so maybe to reach out to the mayor and his team to see what we can do, or even the old high school, renovating that, they talked about at one point, if that's still up to use, if we can't get the Pope John, what else can we do? What else can we, what are the buildings in the city that we can use temporarily to help our children? Thank you.
Thank you. I have Ms. Lambert next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In just a few statements, and I understand it is our charge to move forward and find a solution in partnership with our colleagues in the City Council, but I do have to ask, when you look at our students, do you see labor, or do you see leaders? Is our charge to create employees or critical thinkers? And I ask it with all sincerity as we discuss the long-term impacts of our decisions, because while connecting real-world education to career and technical skills are vitally important, and I have supported them, insistence on one quid of action at the expense of all others is dangerous, biased, and not rooted in the structural obstacles facing our students. Much has changed in the past three years, and I myself was frustrated at the challenges that our students faced as of the last senior interview event in the fall of 2019. And as I met with students then and in the years prior, the Guidance Department was severely underfunded and overburdened without the resources necessary to provide guidance for every scenario. The class of 2020 was actually the first to graduate from the newly-established CTE program, and the challenges faced by undocumented students are not restricted to the financial implications of attending college. Employment, while undocumented, is not just expensive, it can be exploitative, and it's restrictive, including within our own city. We need to create, we need to give our Guidance Department the skills to support our students in navigating these obstacles, and we have to give our students the skills to avoid those exploitative practices that we see every single day. The budget this committee approved made significant investments in our Guidance Department for this reason, to begin planning for life post-high school. We started to look at what the attrition rate from... We started to look at what the attrition rate from freshman year of college to sophomore year of college, because as much as we love sending our kids to college, if they don't make it past sophomore year, it's a waste of money, because they still have a loan. The guidance department has made significant strides in becoming the navigators for the myriad of obstacles in our students' paths and connecting students to resources to support and maintain the course. And continued investment in this area, as well as foundation building at the younger grades, are necessary to build the skills to provide the most access to success. It is why we, this body, that our residents fought for the Student Opportunity Act and the Fair Share Amendment. It's why we advocated for strategic investments. It was not for a surplus, it was not for favoritism, it was to level the playing field for our students. Many of our families made their journeys to give their children access to every possible opportunity, and it's our responsibility to do the same. I spoke to a mother who said her living situation, frankly, and excuse the word, sucks, but she understood that that was the cost to give her child every opportunity, and it reminded me so much of my own family. It reminded me of the stories of the families that are sitting at this table, of stories in the North End where there were 12 kids in a two-bedroom apartment. We've all known and lived it, and it does suck, but it's also temporary, because our families know that the key to long-term success is education. She felt like she was getting screwed out of both. Her words, not mine, and I apologize to that mom. So I've looked at the modular units. I spent a considerable amount of time over the last week, because I wanted to make sure I was being fair and objective, because it's not about being right. And if this is the solution we have to go forward with, then it's what we need to do. So some of the pros, after reading research, extensive studies that we have not yet done, talking to caregivers, teachers, informers, students, and communities with modulators, and I can cite my sources, I'm not tonight for time purposes, but happy to talk to anybody after. The pros are the obvious ones, being space and speed of construction, and also ironically independent thermostat control, which I wish we had tonight, because it's cold. The cons were greater in number. Modulators come at the expense of outdoor space used for recess, and in some of our buildings, I can't imagine, we wouldn't experience the same. The loss of instruction time preparing for students that have to exit a main or modular building, and the time it takes to refocus when they get into their next place, and that included when they were going through covered walkways, but not all modulators can support a covered walkway or access. Several communities had to go with external building modular units, where kids had to bundle up to go to lunch, take off their coats, eat lunch, bundle back up, and go back to class in a separate building. The number that we would need to alleviate existing overcrowding would be significant and provide additional space problems, and a major issue that came up in communities was access for emergency vehicles. So there are at least two schools that I can think of right off the bat where I can consider that this might be an issue. Ventilation and mold are well-documented concerns, as well as eventual wear and tear that is not supported by the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program, because these structures are intended to be temporary. Noise concerns, both within the classroom as well as in the neighborhood. So there was a lot of mitigation that had to be done due to rooftop ventilations that are quite noisy, and because the, where the buildings had to be placed, and our school buildings are in neighborhoods, they had a significant noise impact to the neighborhood. So another thing I had not expected to find. And I am on the record, along with this body, voting affirmatively for the modular units for the Kavarian, which was the K through eight with the highest need and the frontage to place them, although at that meeting, we were moving forward with exploring other space opportunities as reported by the individual that presented the capital improvement plan. Neither I nor this body voted in favor of a full-scale modular solution, and I voted in favor of submission of the MSBA application for a new high school, as did this full body, though neither I nor this body voted for a particular location, curricular programming, or vision. We can't make Band-Aid repairs to structural issues, and we can't make decisions based on experiences 30 years ago, or even three years ago, when we've gone through such an immense amount of change. We need to rely on the expertise of highly educated and experienced educators, as well as the lived experience of our community when they tell us what they need, and we need to understand that employment in trades also requires post-high school education, generally two years' worth, even when you graduate from a trade program, it's essentially equivalent to an associate's degree, and there are no shortcuts. So when I look at our students, I see leaders, I see innovators, and I see possibility, and I ask each of you, what do you see? Who do you see? And what are the possibilities that we're going to give them? And I don't see them in modular units, and I apologize, because I know that a solution is needed, but I cannot support moving forward with a full-scale modular solution.
Again, if you could hold your applause.
Can you say that again?
Next up.
No.
No. Mr. Mayor, did you want to say anything?
There's so much I'd like to say, but I'm going to keep my comments very brief. I think we had, one time, had a proposal from the school department for modulators at the Kavarian School. I think we need to begin that process again. We've had some conversations with different modular companies and architects and engineers, but we need a, we need a meeting with the school department to just begin the process of alleviating the overcrowding. I know the Kavarian and Powellin are the two schools that I feel are most in need of relieving the overcrowding, and we need to all remember that Pope John, just to talk about Pope John, it would never alleviate the problem here at the high school. So the 500 kids that were overcrowded here at this high school, that renovating Pope John would never alleviate that issue at the high school. So we're going to continue with the plan to build a new high school vocational program. I think you all know we have an MSBA application in place. Hope to hear back soon on that, you know, cautiously optimistic, but I know it's probably, there are some conversations regarding looking at starting a separate gateway MSBA fund. I brought that, I broached that subject with the MAPC just the other day in Revere. There's a lot of positive feedback from MAPC about starting a gateway-only MSBA program, because we are the cities that are facing the biggest burden of refugees, overcrowding, gateway cities, and we're having the biggest influx of children, where cities like Boston came in, Somerville, or Newtons and so forth are also applying for monies at the MSBA. They really don't see the issues that we're seeing, but I don't want to get off the subject here regarding modulators. So we just, we need a, like we got prior from the school department, a plan for modulators at the Kavarian. We would need that. I would like to, if, Madam Chair, you'd like to call a meeting of the school department and my administration as soon as possible. Mr. Marashi, who is very well-versed, is with you now on bringing on OPMs and architects. That's what we need to do. We need to look at each school, take, you know, and we can do this by school year this September, where Pope John would be about anywhere from two to three years of construction, which would not help us in the immediate need. I know everybody would like to, you know, see Pope John be used as a temporary school, as we someday build, hopefully build a high school, but in the short term, modulators aren't supposed to be long-term. They're supposed to be for, you know, five to 10 years, and that's the plan, right? To build these modulators, and they're not, I'm not looking to put outdoor trailers. That's not what we're looking to do, you know, so we're looking to do additions to buildings, which, so what I'd say is that we would need, like in any department, a CIP request to the city. We'd like to work with the schools on the CIP request, try to make it the best fix, short-term fix possible, so.
Mr., go ahead.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is what this body would like for me to do regarding next steps. So we have put forward a capital improvement plan, that is where the Kavarian modulators were. So I guess I just want to be very clear, is what is being asked for, not just by you, Mr. Mayor, but this body, for us to provide a new plan with modulators at all buildings?
But you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Through the chair, through you, I think you had given us a plan for Kavarian and Powellin?
Just the Kavarian.
Just the Kavarian. So if that's what you're requesting, again, that I would, you know, I would like to look at that with you, and to see if that is the best option for, the modulators that were specked out weren't really the modulators that I would look at doing, I would look at a better, enhanced modular, you know, not the, not the outdoor trailers. So kids wouldn't be leaving the building, they would, these would be in addition to the property, right? So they'd be, you know, it's a little different. So we'd have to bring on architect and engineer to do the work.
So again, I definitely defer to the will of this body, but this is where I'm just wondering if perhaps this would be the city who leads this process. We did provide a plan last year, however, from experience, I've seen that obviously the city might have its own plan, might have its own architects, might want to do things a certain way, and to be very honest, I don't want to, you know, spend additional time if our input may not even be taken. I'm not in favor of modulators, however, I will, you know, defer to the will of this body and the city. So to me, if this is the project that the city wants, I'm happy to provide input, but I'm just unclear on if I'm supposed to be the one, or the school department is supposed to be the one providing building specs, and if so, are they going to be taken, or are they going to be abandoned as they happened in the past? I just want to make sure we're being efficient with our time and our resources.
I don't want to cross debate all night. Nothing was, no one abandoned your program. We actually put your program forward to the city council, and you were asked to withdraw that. The first, yes, you did at the city council meeting.
I'm talking about the Pope John.
So, you know, Pope John was never, was never a discussion for, to be a school. That was voted on by the city council to purchase a building for senior housing. So where it became, you know, an idea for a school was not, it was never spoken about by my administration or from the schools prior. Okay, so if we want to discuss modulators, send us a proposal, and we'll look at it. So do, you know, do your due diligence, see what, see what you need to relieve the overcrowding in certain schools, how many children you have, those facts and figures. You have a staff that I believe could put together a proposal to send to the city, and we will review that and work with you, like we do any other department, to accommodate and work on the overcrowding at each individual school. We can't do it here at the high school, I don't know if we can add modulators here, but building, renovating Pope John would not alleviate the 500 kids that this school is overcrowded by. But we could look at spaces like this and see if maybe spaces like this could be converted into classroom spaces or other spaces throughout the building. But I would say, I know Mr. Shaw has extensive, extensive, you know, knowledge and workings on, I think he served on the school building commissions and built these schools over the years. I'm sure he knows how to start the process with the mayor's office.
Okay. I have Mr., Ms. Lambert, next.
I'm so.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. 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 Sorry about that. Ms. Lambert.
So just like, just like we can't have modulators at the high school, so there is no solution for the high school, Pope John would provide a better educational experience that would provide a better transition to the high school, but we did vote on April 25th to approve, and actually watching it back, it was, this body approved $2 million for modular units in the front of the Kavarian, priced at $2 million, that was the price point that was presented to us. The superintendent did express during that meeting that she did not want to move forward with that, and the individual that was preventing, presenting the capital improvement plan said that there was a healthy, robust discussion with the administration that day about additional school space, so the modulators may not even be necessary. This was just as a possibility, and with that, I believe, is the information that this committee moved forward on. But for capital improvement plans, I thought that went back to the city council in the springtime, along with our budget proposal. We had already presented the capital improvement plan, the city council chose to not vote in favorably for the modulators, not us, so I thought we had to wait until the springtime before moving forward.
Does anybody, Mr. Mayor?
That is not true. The city council did not vote against modulators. They were told, they were asked by the superintendent to withdraw it and not support it.
That is completely untrue.
That's, I don't believe the city council voted against it, just.
They both, they did vote against the appropriate.
They were asked to, I'm pretty, I'm, my chief of staff is here, I mean, you can ask her, but I'm pretty sure, if I'm not mistaken, you had asked them to not support the modulators at the Kavarian, because you wanted to go with the route of Pope John. But, so I think we can meet at any time.
Right. No, no. We need to meet, we need to meet.
Yes, we do.
But the thing is, I do remember, I don't remember that meeting, I do, I don't remember the superintendent asking them to withdraw that. She talked about, you know.
I'm sure we can find the meeting, someone can probably post it, but.
Yeah.
I would like, I would like to resolve the issues at the, at the schools. I would like to look at increasing, what we call floor area ratio to the existing buildings, and when we call modulators, they're not trailers. Maybe we should stop using the word modular and saying adding additions to some of our schools, and looking at adding additions to some of our schools. Like, we could probably add an addition to this high school. Not feasible, right? It's not, it's not going to achieve what we'd like to achieve, is build a new high school vocational program, but at the Kavarian, at the Powellin possibly, there could be areas where you could add additional classroom spaces to the existing buildings. Now, modulators, outdoor trailers, or modulators that you add to a building are two different types of facilities. So we are waiting at City Hall for a meeting with the school department to bring something before the city council as soon as possible.
Please.
And I'll leave it at that.
Madam Superintendent. We can absolutely have a meeting, however, I think we have already presented this proposal as was mentioned, I'm happy to resend it. Again, it seems that the city has a very different idea of what should be at these schools and even the Kavarian that's different from the proposal we provided. So my suggestion is that we defer to the city, and the city make the plan that the city is going to implement, because it does not seem to me that our suggestions or input are going to be taken. And I feel that another meeting, because I've sat in several of them where we're talking about school space, just end up in more time that is spent talking versus acting.
Okay, I have Ms. Cardillo next. Are you, are you?
Thank you.
I have Ms. Cardillo next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I haven't seen these modulators or prefabricated buildings that we're talking about. I never believed in my head that they would be like a tractor-trailer. Never thought that. I know the ones we have that are very old now weren't trailers either, but is there a site, and I'll ask the superintendent or the mayor, whoever may know, a site than we in the public can look on to see what we're actually talking about with these prefabricated homes that we're, you know, going to house students in? I haven't seen them at all.
There is actually a vendor that specializes in that, I don't know on top of my head, but I can get it to you. I'm sure Mr. Vane has it, the company's name, that specializes in these temporary school classrooms, modular classrooms, whatever you may want to call them, they're actually, yeah, if.
It's to be sent to the full committee.
I can ask her and get that information.
Okay, I would like that to be sent, like in the form of an email, to all the boards that we can get a better idea of what we're actually talking about, for the kind of money we're going to spend, so. The other thing I wanted to say, just in conversation with people, the modulators actually, I don't know if they can be resold, I don't know, saying they're attaching them and so, so I know we moved them from the Kavarian to the Webster, but I don't know if they can be sold somewhere down the road for any other reason, for any other purpose, maybe in another. reason, for any other purpose, maybe in another district going through, we're going through when they need something quickly or whatever. But, the other thing is if we didn't and we had them in place, it seems to me like that would give us additional space unless we fill up those rooms too. But, once we get our school, other schools built, that, that would give us additional space for like more gym space, maybe art rooms, maybe rooms for, you know, children with IEPs and so forth. It just might be additional. I'm just mulling the sofa in my head to see. What do we do with those 10 years down the road if we're not filling up our classrooms the way we are now? That's a possibility. So, does anybody know if they can be, once you're not using them, can you just leave them on site and use them just for other spaces? Art classes, music rooms, something? Or would that just, I mean, I don't know.
All depends how they're attached to the building. If they're outside in the backyard, in the back parking lot, and you have to access them from the staircase to get in, you can easily remove them from the property. If you're, if you're, if you're putting a footing in and you're putting a foundation in, you're adding it to the building and you're cutting holes in the existing building to add, add more space, you wouldn't take them away.
Okay. So, that's more permanent?
Right. More, yeah, right. Exactly.
Okay. All right. That's.
We have companies. We've talked to companies. I, I, I don't think meeting with the schools is a waste of time because now we'll be, the mission will be clear that we're looking to add space at existing buildings and not talking about renovating Pope John any, any longer. Okay? Because if we renovate Pope John, when we do build the high school and we have this school as our middle school, we'll have a building now that has an additional 1,100, whatever, 1,100 seats available. That's just not good practice of spending dollars, taxpayer's dollars. When you have modulars or whatever you want, existing increase of size to certain buildings in the city, that will always stay there. That you can always use for art classes, music classes, interventionists, and so forth and so on. So.
Thank you. The other thing is, I would truly like to see this be a collaborative effort between the school and the city. I think it's important to work together on this. It's not about liking each other's personalities. It's about the students. It's about the future of our students and our entire city. So, for goodness sakes, let's just bury all the hatchets at least during this so that we can. And, please, don't dismiss something. If, if the school puts something together, it shouldn't be dismissed. If it's not acceptable, it should be discussed. And, I don't want to see any more hurt feelings. We need to move forward with this.
No one from the administration dismissed the modules.
I'm just asking that that doesn't happen in the future.
It was removed from the council meeting.
I'm not accusing, I'm not accusing. I'm just saying I don't want to see any of that that comes from, from here, from us, be dismissed. It, it may be silly. It may not sound right. It may not be feasible, but at least it needs to be respected as a suggestion from one of us, from the superintendent, from her staff. And, as you said, Mr. Shaw, he worked along with the city in this.
Every idea and every suggestion is respected in this administration.
Okay. And, and just, you know.
When it hasn't.
As long as we have the proposal to the city, we can move forward. That's the way I'm looking at it because we belabor this.
And we had a proposal before the city council, and it was, it was removed.
We got that. We.
You understand that, right?
Yes, we do. I understand that.
Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have Mr. Mangan first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The mayor and I have talked, and also some members and I have talked, you know, about this particular issue. I just, I can honestly, and I certainly respect, and he has an opinion, I have an opinion that's different, and, and I'm not saying which one is right or wrong, just my personal opinion based on people that I talked to. I just think that, and I know he said last week at the meeting that, you know, he didn't want to consider Pope John. I'm still, I'm still going to hold out hope that maybe something transpires that he has a change of heart. And the reason I say this is that, a couple different things, reasons why, Madam Chair. The first one is, I mean, again, we don't know what the costs are going to be, and we have no idea with the modulars, okay? It talked about, now I would be for, wholeheartedly be for, which I'm not even for the modulars, but attaching them to the buildings. What's the cost going to be to get it, it's not just, you know, just, we know it's not just the structure. It's the cost associated with attaching them to these buildings. And, we can debate which buildings need them or not, but I think much-needed parking space for the teachers is going to be taken away at some of these buildings. And, what type of work has to be done in some of these buildings in order to get access to these modulars depending on where you want to put them? Now, I don't know if the Lafayette School would be considered far or not, but I'm pretty well-versed down there. And I know there's one or two doorways that come out to the parking lot where the teachers park. Okay? Those are classrooms down in that area. You're going to have people going through classrooms to get into modulars? Doesn't make any sense to me. No. I would think that you would probably have to retrofit the Lafayette School on that lower first floor on the right-hand side in order to accommodate those, you know, the attached modulars to the building. I have no idea. We have no, none of us have any idea what that cost is going to be. Okay? Again, I look at Pope John. Again, why I'm holding out hope for Pope John, and it may never come, is that you make an investment there, okay? And I understand what the mayor says, and, you know, if we get the new high school that, you know, a few years down the road, this could be the junior high school. And so, it makes Pope John, you know, it, it, it's a moot point. But, I don't look at it that way. I look at it as that you could always hold on to Pope John because we have Adams School, okay, old, you know. You know, it's not a huge amount of students there, but it has a certain amount. And you have the old high school, the Webster Extension, I don't know how many classrooms and stuff in there. We could certainly take that down the road and sell those properties, or even on the side of the old high school, make housing there down the road. Some, a good amount of housing on that property right there. Sell, sell it to a developer, whoever, this and that, but for affordable housing, but also taking the Adams School and selling the Adams School, maybe putting some more housing down there if we can down in the future. And Vine Street, Vine Street Building, you know, can we incorporate? Because we did talk about, if I'm not mistaken, we did talk about maybe when we did the tour, talking about maybe having the administrative offices up on the, the top floor up there at Pope John. So, I just think when you add everything in and you take, you know, in a couple of years, if you can get the preschools or maybe kindergarten, and in the future, house them at Pope John after you're done using it for a junior high school for so many years, hopefully a new high school, because I'm all for the new high school and the CTE and everything. I just think it makes sense. Whereas, if you have, if you have an attached structure, I won't even call them a module. If you have an attached structure, there's no, first of all, it takes away from the beauty of all these buildings that we have. I just believe. And, I don't think it's, I don't think it's beneficial to the community as a whole, you know, and our students, whatever. When I think that Pope John going forward, I just think it's the best solution. Again, I understand the mayor's concerns, whatever, and so forth, and I respect them, whatever. Doesn't mean that I'm right. It just means that's just my opinion and, you know, that's just the way I feel, Madam Chair, going forward. So, I just, and honestly, in good, in good conscience, I just, I can't support attached things because knowing that, I just think there's better solutions out there. And that's just one person's opinion, but thank you.
I have Mr. McLaughlin next.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Madam Chairwoman, I would echo the comments of Ms. Cardillo, which is that I would hope to see in the coming year, whoever serves as the chairman of our school committee is able to build the bridge, to be able to gap city hall and the school administration and school committee on this subject matter. That being said, I know on the city council previously, we would have ad hoc committees, where it would be working committees, be able to be created to be able to dial, to dissect in the dialogue that it needed to be had on a particular topic. I wonder if that's something that we could do in the future year. Obviously, tonight is your last meeting, Madam Chairwoman. That's why I'm not dismissing. You are involvement in this, but you won't be here to make that decision.
Uh huh.
That way, we can bring all of the decision-makers to one table and have a thorough, meaningful conversation so that there's not two different proposals out there and there's not two different directions being had on probably one of the most important topics that we'll see in this term at least as a body, and that's additional classroom space in our city. I believe we've all been in, in a group effort of saying we need additional classroom space. So, I think the time is now to come together as one community and work together to be able to see a meaningful decision made about how we move forward so that next school year, we're not in this situation and that we're able to have additional classroom space. There shouldn't be who's right, who's wrong, who's done this, who's done that. Let's move on from all of that. Let's move forward to next year, at the end of this year. Think about next year. Think about how we move this subject forward so that we can come to a solution quick and meaningful. Thank you.
I have Mr. Barrows next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the record, no one asked the city council to withdraw the $2 million. I watched that meeting. I was there. That the city council decided not to vote on the $2 million because they want Pope John. The majority of the city council made that decision that night. It was not a request by the superintendent. It was not a request by the chair. It was not requested by any member of this body. It was a decision by the city council. Just, just want to make sure that is on the record because I watched that meeting. I remember that meeting. Thank you. And that is, I'm sure it's on the minutes of the city council. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything to say? Mr. Marcus?
You know, what we, I got here, we were talking about the schools, the first meeting that I ever got here. It's January, February, March, April, May. And if we're going to keep on just kicking around, back and forth, back, we're going to be sitting here in the summer saying the same thing. Either somebody's got to do something. I'm willing to do anything to help these kids. I mean, come on, this is getting to be ridiculous. Can't we all get along? You heard that before. So, I would suggest that, I mean, we're at nowhere now. I was, maybe the people in charge, like you and the mayor, and I don't know who, her or Jeanie, whoever is the president of the board, can just get a meeting that can convey it to us, that we could lead us. Everyone here is trying to lead in a different, you know, they want to help, but they can't just get it together to help. You know, we just can't, I don't know. We're stuck. And I want it to be done. I want these people to get help, these kids, you know. And I know we all do, so why?
So, I'm yielding to the city's will, which I think would be the fastest way about this. I'm happy to provide input where it's required, but I believe that, yes, we shouldn't continue to kick the can down the road. Like I said with Pope John, when they had a different proposal, I'm willing to yield to the city's proposal. It is mass general law that the municipality is the one that is supposed to provide school space. So, I'm happy to provide input where it is asked for. However, I yield to the city, which I think is the easiest way to demonstrate that I'm, I'm, we're willing to move forward. I'm not disagreeing. I'm saying let's just move forward.
Well, we did all we could. We took the vote with Pope John. We, we, now we're starting to do the modulars. Okay. I mean, we got to get something because this is a bad situation. The kids, you know, we've talked about it. They sit on top of each other.
Okay.
Somebody help.
Ms. Sarni. Oh, Mr. McLaughlin.
So, what the statement that Madam Superintendent, the alien agent said, and I do believe her input is important in this topic because I believe that she is the one that will be, needs to be involved in this. I would like to put a form of a motion forward that we refer this piece to the mayor, the mayor's office for a response back in 90 days.
90 days.
90 days.
30.
30 days, 60 days. I, I'm trying to think about how much time the architects needed to, to do the plan for, for Pope John. So, I was trying to be realistic about the timeframe. As soon as possible is what I really want to say. If it's next meeting or whenever it is, ask that the mayor present something to the collective body of government in the city with a plan. 30 days is fine. 30 days is fine. Put that in a formal motion that in 30 days, the mayor comes forward with a plan for a modular, again, I don't want to use modulars either, the word, for additional classroom space in our city.
All right. And I have Ms. Sarni. Did you want to say anything?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay. So, we have a, just be, if I could from the chair, obviously, I'm disappointed as a, as a 1977 graduate of Pope John High School. I don't want anybody to do the math. I think that'd be wise if you didn't.
You got any ideas?
I, you know, I did take a tour of the building, and I thought it was really in great shape. And, you know, we're at an impasse. And, you know, if this is what we're going to have to do, we're going to have to do it. It's disappointing, but, you know, we need to find some additional classroom space. And if that's the option, I guess we have to do that. So, I have a motion to, for this, on this matter, to.
Refer to mayor.
Refer to the mayor's office with the, some type of a report back in 30 days on additional classroom space, including, you know, and just keep us all on the loop along the way. Does that satisfy?
Roll call vote.
All right. Motion is made and seconded to request the mayor's office to report back to us in 30 days on the status of the additional classroom space.
On modulars.
Modulars?
Yes.
It's by motion, Madam Chair.
It's additional classroom space. Mr. O'Connell.
Mr. Barrows?
No.
Ms. Cardillo?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Nine in the firm, one negative.
And I'd just like to thank the superintendent for all of her hard work, as well as the mayor's office. And, let's, let's get down to business and, you know, get this thing going. Okay? All right. If we could have the superintendent read the next hour of business.
Item number five is to request approval of the FY23 Teacher Diversification Pilot Program grant in the amount of $74,755. This grant will help us continue this critical work, which we have highlighted and discussed several times over the past two years. I thank this committee for its support in joining the Commonwealth and trying to diversify our teaching core in the teaching pipeline. This grant is being divided into four buckets, which are as follows. $11,885 for the EHS Education Pathway, $29,710 for financial incentives, $23,770 for tuition assistance, and $9,390 for SEI endorsements.
Fable action on the grant. Second. Motion is made, made and seconded for fable action on the grant. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardillo?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Nine in the affirmative. You are so moved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Now, item number six is to request approval of a SEL and mental health grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the amount of $76,880. The formal name of this grant is Supporting Students' Social, Emotional Learning, Behavioral, and Mental Health and Wellness Through Multi-Tierred Systems of Supports Grant.
Sub approve the grant? Motion is made and seconded for approval of the grant. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardillo?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Nine zero.
Nine in the affirmative. You are so moved. Madam Superintendent?
Item number seven is to request approval of an Innovation Pathways Implementation and Support Grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the amount of $50,000. This funding will support a year-long project to develop Everett High School's innovation pathways specifically in the areas of computer science, cybersecurity, STEM early engineering designation, health science, and entrepreneurial finance. We will stipend a coordinator and teachers to lead this work.
Fable action?
Motion is made and seconded for fable action. Clerk, call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardillo?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Nine zero. So moved.
Nine zero. So moved. Madam Superintendent?
Item number eight is to request approval of the Starz Artist Residency Grant in the amount of $6,100. Art Coordinator Carolyn DeChico applied for and earned this grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council, Council for two large-scale and exciting projects. The first project is a hands-on sculpture with local Everett artist Martha Chico. The first project is a hands-on sculpture with local Everett artist Martha Chason Sokol. Ms. Sokol will complete an artist residency at the Devon School, within which students will create both personal and collaborative sculptures that tell stories in order to deepen community connections. The second will support the musical production of Willy Wonka at the Kavarian School. Eric Downenhauer and Haley Potritas will complete artist residencies at the Kavarian during after-school hours to bring music and dance programming culminating in the production of Willy Wonka. Teacher Brittany Mitchell will also support this effort.
Accept approval of the grant?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for approval of the grant. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, ten zero.
Ten in the affirmative, you have passed the matter. Superintendent, if you could read the next order.
Item number nine is to request approval of the building capacity for high-quality instruction through EdTech in the amount of $92,900. The purpose of this federally funded competitive grant program is to provide money for districts to help teachers learn how to utilize technology to deliver high-quality instruction. We will use these resources for professional development for 200 teachers over the next two years. We want to use technology for quicker and more efficient administration of and response to formative assessments, and we will increase digital learning experiences during lessons to make content delivery more engaging and scaffolded in order to meet the diverse needs of the EPS student population, specifically those of English learners and students on IEPs.
Fable action.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for fable action. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, ten zero.
Ten zero, you have passed the matter.
Madam Chair, can I take a moment of personal privilege?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I just, just sitting here reflecting, and what really bothers me is that when we had a statement of interest for a new middle school and we were approved to build a new middle school, it was at that time the prior administration, school administration, decided that we weren't going to build a new middle school because we couldn't agree on a location, and Pope John was ruled out by the architects and the schools for a feasible location because of lack of parking, a lack of outdoor space for kids to play in recess, so many issues, right? So we returned, we called MSBA and said we declined to build a new middle school because we couldn't agree on a location. Because I proposed locations down on River Green, across Route 16, we looked at this location across from the high school here, we couldn't agree on a location for a middle school. Pope John was ruled out at the time we did this. So, and then, then as Mayor, we purchased a building for the purpose of senior and veterans' housing, which you were in favor of when you were the Veterans Officer. And then, now we go back and say, we don't want to do that. Do you know how aggravating it is sometimes to sit in this position and you're trying to do what's right? And I'm not talking here about to anyone, I'm just explaining to you the process of being Mayor for 17 years in a city and trying to put it all together, and it's not so simple. You all think it's, some people think it's so simple, you just like snap your finger and things get done. It's very hard for a Mayor to go out and spend 80, 75, 80 million dollars, because the initial price is 76 or whatever it is. I know it's going to be a lot more than that, because I know cost of construction, inflation, labor, and everything else. I know it says it's 75, and I know it's going to be 25% over. I already know it's going to be. And we're not going to have the outdoor spaces we need for recreational purposes. And then when we increase taxes and exorbitant amount of money, people are going to be upset. Those people whose voices we're not hearing now. So it's frustrating. You understand it's frustrating. When I, we wrote a statement of interest, we got approval to build a new middle school, and then we couldn't agree with the prior, two administrations ago, on where to build a middle school. So it's not that I don't want to support children, you know, or kids over seniors and veterans, no, no, no. My entire legacy has been supporting our kids and ensuring that we have good facilities for our children, outdoor sports facilities, wherever it may be, support for schools. It's just a difficult job when you also have a police department that's looking at a new facility, a building that was built for, you know, 70 officers, that now you have 120 officers because your city is growing. It doesn't end. It doesn't end. You know, when you have, you look at municipal buildings, they're a disgrace, really. You're keeping them going, you know, with the resources that you have. It's just, it's a difficult task, you know? So I do want to come up with a short-term solution to build additional classroom spaces in some of these overcrowded schools. You know, I get it, you know? I was a product of being in overcrowded school. I remember those days, you know? But it's not, the comments that you hear from people, and like, comments that come up before public participation, it's just, it's actually, it's wrong, you know? And for people to think that, it's just, it's just wrong, you know? And, you know, hopefully, we can come to some sort of resolution and come to an agreement that these modules would benefit these middle schools. And we get approved to build a new high school vocational school, and we build that soon, you know, and hopefully the next, you know, decade. But I just had to get it off my chest because we had a statement of interest to build a new middle school. We got approved, and then we could not agree at the time, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Where are we?
Item number 10 is to request approval to establish a memorial scholarship in the name of longtime EPS teacher Carol Sullivan-Lucey. It is possible that some of you here tonight knew Carol Sullivan-Lucey, a lifelong Everett resident who taught in the EPS for more than 30 years. This scholarship is being organized by her sisters, Elaine Smith and Arlene Baikman. The $1,000 scholarship will be awarded every June to a deserving EHS student who plans to pursue a career in education. The letter from Ms. Smith and Ms. Baikman is in your packet, and of course, we appreciate any chance to expand our already robust scholarship program.
Fable action on the approval of the grant?
Second motion.
Mr. Marcus?
Could I just, just wanted to say something about this woman. This woman is a very, very good friend of mine. She won the Chris McCullough Award one year too, and she was fantastic with the kids, fantastic. She passed away, I think it was last year sometime, so this is really nice, you know? I know the family, and it just makes me feel good.
Motion has been made for fable action.
And with the letter of gratitude to the family?
A rook hold.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Marcus?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, ten zero.
Ten zero, so moved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Roman numeral seven is items submitted by school committee members. Item number one is to request a schedule change for the regular meetings of the Everett School Committee scheduled for January 2023. I'm requesting that we meet on Tuesday, or Mr. McLaughlin is requesting that we meet on Tuesday, January 17th at 6:30 PM, and Monday, January 30th at 6:30 PM. And again, this was submitted by Mr. McLaughlin. For everyone watching, our January meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, January 3rd, and Tuesday, January 17th. So this proposal calls for us to change one of our January dates, the January 3rd to January 30th.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Madam Chairwoman, I was looking through some of our rules because I know we had sent the piece earlier this year to rules, policies, procedures. I believe you had done that, and unfortunately, it didn't come out of committee throughout this year, unfortunately. But one of the rules that I found in reading through our rules as a school committee was, and I'll read this if you're okay with that, Madam Chairwoman. When the regular meeting falls on a holiday, the committee shall vote to determine an alternative date at the preceding meeting. When the regular meeting falls upon a Monday during a vacation, the meeting may be postponed and held on the following Monday. So I saw that, and I said, oh, wow, that's interesting, because if we were to follow our rule, it would put us in conflict with the city charter, which is that the school committee and the city council cannot or should not meet on the same evening. So if we were to move the January 3rd meeting to January 17th in support, in reserve of Dr. Mahout King Day on January 16th, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself, January 9th couldn't be a date because of the meeting. So that's why I proposed Tuesday, January 17th as the meeting because of Dr. Mahout King Day on Monday, January 16th. Thankfully, or luckily, this month, we have five Mondays in the month, so we would be able to not be in conflict with the city charter by moving the first meeting until January 17th, and the second meeting utilizing the fifth Monday of the month, which would put us on January 30th. I know that we'll have back-to-back meetings on Mondays, but we, sometimes those things come up, and I'm sure that we will be able to get a quorum. So that's why I presented this, and that's why I used those dates, so that I could try to not be in foul of the city charter with the city council meeting on January 9th. So I would ask for fable action on the item as presented, so that we stay within the guidelines of our rules and we don't run afoul.
Fable action?
Ms. Lambert? Actually, we corrected this, we amended this in April of 2020, so that when said regular meeting falls on a legal holiday, a regular meeting of the school committee shall instead be held on 6:30 PM on the Tuesday following such holiday, which is what happens because the observed legal holiday is the Monday. So our school committee meetings should be the Tuesday, and we no longer have to vote on it. For some reason, I don't know why, there was the previous one, but it is on our, we voted on it in April of 2020 to change those rules so that we don't have to vote on it. It just happens, and I think for transparency's sake, and the reason why we have established those days is so that people know what to expect, when to expect it, instead of, people would not expect on a fifth Friday for the school, I mean, fifth Monday for the school committee to be meeting. So for the public's sake, I would ask that we keep within our rules and keep it on the Tuesday following each of the holidays.
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Exactly. We've done that change in order to avoid any of these issues. On January 3rd, our kids are coming back also to school, so I do not see any conflict. In fact, if we were to change from meeting tonight and wait the other way until meeting on the 17th, this body would be a month out, not being able to approve bills and payrolls, not being able to do all the approvals that we need to do. So I'm not sure who this would satisfy, but it's not the city charter, or who would this change benefit. It's not the city charter because we changed it on our rules, so according to our rules, we meet on that Tuesday. Second, not repeating myself, but we would be a month out, so meeting tonight on the 19th, and now meeting only on the 17th. So it's pretty much a month without meeting, without approving bills and payrolls, when our kids are actually back in that, back on Tuesday, the 3rd. So I strongly believe that no change should be made, that this committee should go ahead and meet two weeks from now, the same time that our kids are back, and our employees, our school are back after the holidays. Thank you.
Mr. Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's just, this is just, actually, one, this is one mistake, for whatever reason, I don't know why this is like this, and, you know, this, I've gone through this, and today, I spent a few hours going through every single rule and, you know, thing that we have, and Madam Chair, and I think some of the members will agree, this needs a lot of work. This, the rules itself, just the structure of it, I'm going to give you, and this just goes along, which I understand what Mr. McLaughlin said, so on one hand, we have, which he read, which is exactly right, which is in our rules, okay, about Monday during a vacation can postpone or halt on the following Monday. But then we have, when you go to the next page, it says, when said regular meeting falls on a legal holiday, a regular meeting of the school committee shall, all right? Same thing it says over here, shall. So we have two different things that contradict each other, one after another. But I do, I would say that because this thing, and I don't know who voted, I mean, some of us weren't here, some of us were here, but this was amended April 16, 2020. So for whatever reason, they tried to correct it, but for whatever reason, and I don't know, I don't have the minutes for that meeting, whatever, this whole section before it that I believe that Mr. McLaughlin was referring to should have been stricken, so it should have been totally taken out. So he's not wrong to say that, you know, this is in there, so it's an interpretation thing of what you think it is and shouldn't be. The only thing I would say is that we go with the one that was amended in April 26 of 2020, also just following past practices, Madam Chair. I mean, I look at it and say, because this was done in 2020. I looked just for this purpose alone today, this afternoon at work, I happened to go and pull up the agenda from, I think it was the first meeting in January 2021, and, which would be the same, that would be happening next month. And there was no, it was a regular meeting held and whatever, like I said, whatever, now it was a holiday or not, but the fact is, was is that whenever the first available Monday was, they had it. It was considered a regular, if you look at the agenda, now whether it's wrong or not, it says on the actual agenda, regular meeting. Now, there happened to be an organizational meeting that night, but beyond that, there was also several items, regular business, that were on the agenda that night. So, and beyond that, like I said, there's other, there are other things beyond what Mr. McLaughlin just pointed out, there's other things that, that have to be changed in here, like so, and again, I saw, it's off track a little bit, but it said, for attendance, and this is under subcommittees, it shall be recorded in the minutes of the subcommittee in only states, finance meetings, the members of school committee that are present and those that are absent. Well, that shouldn't read that, it should be in all subcommittee meetings, not just the subcommittee on finance, who's there and who's not there, something else that needs to change. We have to change our rules on, for ADA requirements under Section 6. Our school committee meetings shall be held at a handicapped accessible building unless otherwise voted by a majority of the members of the school committee prior to the official public notice of the meeting? No, absolutely not. So the members have the right to say, well, it's not going to be at a handicapped? No, absolutely not. I just think going forward, unless this particular room is not available, it's ADA accessible, we should be having every single meeting here. Nothing more at the administration building, everything should be here, because this is, this is, this is something that's, what do you call it, that's ADA accessible. The other thing, Madam Chair, which is, and this is right at the beginning, Section 2, powers. The school committee, and this is what it currently states, shall be the judge of the election and qualification of its members, and shall determine the rules for its proceedings? Well, yeah, we can determine the rules for our proceedings, but we're not the judge of the election and the qualification of the members. We don't decide that. So again, Madam Chair, I'm just pointing out several inconsistencies in this. And so that's why going forward, you know, I'm going to make a recommendation that, again, and I don't know why it didn't get, as Mister McLaughlin stated earlier, I don't know why it didn't get addressed. But all these things need to go through with a fine-tooth comb in rules, policies and procedures, Madam Chair, starting the beginning of next year. And we need to look at it. And I would recommend bringing in, just my opinion, everyone can, but David Flood, who I work with on a daily basis, I think would be great. And also our attorney, Mister Galvin, to come in to oversee the making sure that everything and the wording and everything is correctly, whatever. So that's just something come, you know, come the new year, that certainly I will be putting on and is a thing to correct all these inconsistencies. Thank you.
Mister Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We can waive our rules and have the meetings on the seventeenth and thirtieth. Good thing is we have five Mondays this month. And if the vice chairman, his reason why he's doing this, which I understand he'd like to do the meetings these two weeks because I think he's not, he's away for the first week because it is a travel week. So I'm fine with seventeenth and thirtieth. Still having two meetings that month. And bills and accounts, just to let you all know, by the time you vote for them, I've already paid them, sent them in. So don't worry about voting for them because the warrants come to me before you even vote for me to authorize me to vote for it. So and we continue to work every day, regardless if we have a meeting or not, on behalf of the residents of our city. So I am fine, second motion, to have the meeting on the seventeenth and thirtieth. And let's move on.
I have, go ahead, Madam Superintendent. Did you want to say something?
Yes, I just also wanted to bring up, whether it's important or not, that we did vote on September seventh of this year on the proposed regular school committee schedule that has all of the, and we put out a calendar. We put it out to this group to vote on and to our community. So I just want to bring that up as well.
Does anybody else want to say, oh, Ms. Cardello, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for not ignoring me, Madam Chair. No, actually, I was going to suggest that Mister Mangan put that in the form of a motion to put that into rules, policies and procedure. But he said he's going to do that. But I just wanted to say, for selfish reasons, when I saw this on here, I said, oh, good. Because I know I'm going to be away, so I wouldn't be attending. And I was, I was going to tell you, even though you weren't going to be chair next year, but I was going to tell you that after the meeting tonight, that I know I won't be at that meeting. But, you know, the will of the board, it's just that was, that was a selfish thing on my part. Thank you.
Mister, Mister Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, just following past practices, what was done two years ago. Man, the thing was amended. And I don't know who in the school committee amended it. Again, I don't have the minutes. Two years ago, it was amended, I mean, 2020, April, two and a half years ago, it was amended. A few months, whatever, eight months later, it came in front and they had a regular first Monday, available Monday, whatever. And then this year, it just happens to be a holiday. So I don't see the difference between having it on a Monday or having it on a Tuesday. We do that all year. So I just say we keep it, we keep it the way it is. That's just my personal opinion, past practices. It's never been changed like that ever.
Call for the question? Yeah. All right. So before we call for the question, would you allow the superintendent to just?
I just wanted to bring up, I don't know if it has been brought up, that that is also the organizational meeting, which is an important meeting of the year. It's always held at the beginning of January. And actually, there are separate rules that stipulate that it's that first meeting in January. So I just wanted to bring that up as well. And then also ask for clarification if the organizational meeting, my understanding is that would still occur on January third, even if the regular meetings were switched.
So the organizational meeting is our first meeting in January, which would be January seventeenth. That'd be our organizational meeting. So I think we're waiving our rules and we?
So the motion has been made and seconded to suspend our rules and have the meeting on the Tuesday, the seventeenth and Monday, the thirtieth. If you don't agree with suspending our rules.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Sam had her hand up first.
Go ahead, Ms. Lambert.
Call for the question.
I've never, we've never rescheduled meetings based on individuals' attendance. And I'm just concerned that this is precedent. And truthfully, if this is because of travel time, that's happened in the past before. Mister Barrows was not available at the first meeting in December because he was traveling. You know, so we've never scheduled meetings around ourselves as individuals, as a body, and with the expectation we set with the public. And I know I personally, and I've worked with this committee very hard to maintain transparency with the community. And there's an expectation of when we're meeting. And I believe we should stay with that. And if you're unable to make the meeting, I know that, you know, provisions have always been made as far as like if you want to send in your thoughts to the chair or something. But otherwise, I know my meeting schedule, we know our meeting schedule. And I'm just very concerned if we are going to change and set precedent based on individuals' availability when we're a body. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Mister Mayor, did you have a question?
It seems like people will be traveling the week, first week of January. Is that what I'm hearing here from most? Ellie? Are there others that are not here that week? So this, the first meeting would be our organizational meeting? Is that also why it's a more important meeting for people to want to be here for?
If I could just clarify, it's also in our rules under chapter two, section one, annual meeting, which is our annual meeting to organize. And it reads, "The annual meeting of the school committee for the purposes of organizing shall be held on the first Monday in January of each year." So I'm just pointing that out. I'm not saying with any bias either way.
That's on our rules, right?
Yes.
So our rules can be waived. They've always happened.
Mister Barrows?
I just can't understand why the rules need to be waived two weeks prior to the meeting. As the superintendent mentioned, we September voted, we all look at, we all received at home our calendar. And then two weeks, like in the middle of December, we looked at and then we believed our meeting should be changed. Based on what? I was away last school committee meeting. The meeting was not changed or canceled because I was away. You all met, you all voted, you all had meetings, right? I was away, visited my family, visited my sick father. The meeting was not canceled, was not postponed because Mark Onewas was away. I just do not understand the reason that we are debating a change and suspending our rules two weeks prior to the meeting when we always, always meet on that first Monday or Tuesday when we updated our rules. I still do not understand the reason of changing this meeting.
All right. So we do have a motion that's been made and seconded for favorable action on the item that Mister McLaughlin has submitted. Now, if you don't want to waive the rules, you'll vote no on that. If you want to waive the rules, you'll vote yes. So at this time, with the motion and second for favorable action, I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mister Barrows?
No.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert? Mister La Monica?
Yes.
Mister Mangan?
No.
Mister Marcus?
Yes.
Mister McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
No.
Six-four, the measure has been passed.
Six-four, the measure has been passed. If the superintendent could read the next order of business?
So item number nine is bills and payroll.
Mister Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to submit bills and payroll in the amount of one million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifteen cents.
Second. Motion is made and second to submit bills and payrolls in the amount of one million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifteen cents. Clerk, a call or roll?
Mister Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mister La Monica?
Yes.
Mister Mangan?
Yes.
Mister Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni? Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, nine zero.
Nine in the affirmative, you have so moved. Mister Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to make a motion that we pay bills and payroll in the amount of one million, seven hundred and, excuse me, one million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifteen cents.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of one million, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars, no, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand. Sorry, guys, it's been a long night. Seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifteen cents. Clerk, a call or roll?
Mister Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mister La Monica?
Yes.
Mister Mangan?
Yes.
Mister Marcus?
Yep.
Ms. Sarni? Madam Chair?
Yes.
Nine zero, so moved.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion has been made and seconded
Happy holidays.
For the, to adjourn and wish everybody again a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And for all those kiddies that are out there waiting for Santa Claus, I know he's coming. Trust me, I talked to him yesterday. Yep, he's coming to everybody's house. So happy holiday from Cynthia Sarni and the rest of the team here. You have adjourned.